The special city council workshop at the City of Dunellen on June 26th.
Recording in progress.
Could we please all stand for please?
Let me introduce to the flag the United States of America and to the Republic of British stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever being just.
Thank you. Does anybody like to say a prayer or we just want to take a moment to silence? Yes, ma'am.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering today. We ask that you let our ears be open, let our mouths speak your words and your truth, that you guide us each and every one of us, that we all work in the best efforts to become as a united city and helping one another. In your name we pray, your Lord, amen.
Amen.
Now you're done?
Here.
Vice Mayor Anticke?
Here.
Councilperson Mendelso?
Here.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Here.
Councilwoman Covage?
Yes.
Julie Denowski, Rutgers Court?
Yeah.
Chris Daglion, Police Chief?
Here.
Lieutenant Ryan here?
No, he's been up the building.
Okay. City Attorney Andrew Han?
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, the City Hall Bulletin Board, on Monday, June 19th, 2023, and amended on June 22nd to correct the agenda back.
Okay. Couple of things before we get started. First, I want the public to know that you will have the normal three-minute time limit to speak. Once the council finishes renewing his ordinance, and I will allow everyone to speak who would like to speak. A couple of things to try to keep things on track. I want to apologize over the last two meetings of letting the council kind of ping pong back and forth when they make discussions. I'm going to try to change that tonight where once a member of the council speaks, until everyone else on the council has the time to speak, I really will not allow you to speak again, which is really the way it should be done. Again, we're going to cover ordinance 2022-5, vacation rental draft. It's been working on for a while. But to start, Councilwoman Dosa has asked to share a PowerPoint presentation with everybody before we get going. So Julianne, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Wally. So the last time we came together for a special workshop to review the ordinance, I had some concerns from the start that the form that we were all using, that we might not have exactly been on the same page. And I know that we've all put a lot of work into reviewing it, so the last meeting I found to be a little bit difficult and disjointed, and I didn't leave feeling like, you know, maybe it was the best start. So I put together a presentation today to be able to talk about, to talk about the ordinance's big picture, and for us to make some, have some understandings as a council and decide together the direction that we want it to go, instead of the section by section that we're doing. Because I think that by doing section by section right now, because, because there's not a clear understanding amongst all of us of the direction that we're going, that is pretty difficult. So I won't promise that my presentation is brief, or that it would even, you know, I expect it will interrupt the plan to review the ordinance, but I think that it is really important. So the PowerPoint is going to ask some questions and elicit discussion about the big picture, what we would like the ordinance to look like, the layout of the process and the timeline, which is something that a lot of people have been asking, what it will look like, big picture. And we'll also clarify for the staff and our city lawyer how to help us pass a successful ordinance. So I, I heard you say, Wally, about the efforts of better organizing speakers, and I appreciate that. I think with the nature of my presentation, that if we could really limit any councilperson's comments to about two minutes, again, the PowerPoint presentation is not going to talk yes/no responses for each council member, because these answers will help us later about specifics of Denellen's ordinance, it's going to talk about big level, picture on with the development of the ordinance. and process. Okay, the first slide. I wanted to acknowledge that I frequently call points of order during the meetings, Oh, here we are. Great. So does the City of Dunellen have the right to create and enforce a short-term rental and this is, as many of you know, a rule of Robert's Rules, where we can interrupt ordinance?
Want a response?
a speaker when rules are broken. Oh, like a yes/no response, please. And most frequently, it might be that a speaker is speaking on something that's not the question
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
at hand.
All opposed? Okay.
So as everyone has the right to call points of order, I will continue to do that and So, Wally, was that five yeses? try to be clear when I call it of how I think the rule has been broken and what we can Did we get a yes response, Jim? do to correct it. Again, asking that all discussion be germane to the discussion on the slide.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So I heard five yeses that Denellen has the right to create and enforce a short-term rental ordinance.
Can I ask for a sixth? That would be the attorney.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Denellen clearly has the ability per changes made in 2014 to create some sort of regulations for short-term rentals.
Thank you.
And I appreciate all of Andrew's help, because I'm very novice, but I will also provide explanation after each one. So in 2014, Florida legislature specifically amended Florida law to permit local governments to create regulations that distinguish vacation rentals from other residential properties. So this was in House Bill 307, June 2014, is another reference. And if you want to look at Florida state statutes, I would send you to 509.0327B. The city has backup documents. If anyone wants to see the documents in response to these questions, that will be available with public record. The second question that we'll look at, can short-term rentals be regulated different than traditional residences under Florida state law?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes, yes. Okay, we'll review, Rex, and we'll take the vote at the end. So the answer to this is that yes, short-term rentals can be regulated different than traditional residences under Florida state law. The 2014 amendment allowed local governments to regulate vacation rentals differently than other residential properties. Vacation rentals must fall with statutory definition of a transient public, of transient public lodging establishment, and these are regulated in the public lodging section of Florida statutes. When we transform the use of this structure, meaning the house, to accommodate public guests for temporary occupancy, it does make the rules that can be enforced differently between the business and the traditional residence. Does that sound accurate, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay. So let's take another yes/no on can short-term rentals be regulated different than traditional residents under Florida state law? Yes.
Yes. Based on that information, yes.
Yes. Okay, we have unanimous five yeses. Thank you. Next slide. Should Denellen's short-term rental ordinance include associated Florida state laws and statutes? So as we're going through the ordinance, sometimes we're, for example, there's associated fire safety and building codes, or there's things that refer back to City of Dunellen's codes and ordinances. So this question is a little less, is a little less black and white, but when you are looking at the ordinance that we're working on, would you like to be able to link back what's in our proposed ordinance back to fire and building codes?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, we all five can agree on that. So when we talk about the fire safety sections, when we talk about things like hard-wired fire smoke detectors and things, an example of this would be an administrative document, 69A, and it would talk about all fire safety and building codes. So we know that safety is good business, it makes our short-term rentals more attractive, and by taking a good look at safety, we're going to reduce, hopefully reduce incidents and accidents in our city. Anything to add, Andrew?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. You hesitate a little bit.
Well, I think one of the distinctions I would just make out for council is it, as you pointed out, it's a little bit less black and white, because the city's required to enforce certain state codes and so forth, also has the ability to modify state building codes and make some things the way that it wants to. So the question then becomes, does the city want to go beyond these things? Because the city could essentially just say, hey, you're going to comply with the building codes and so forth, and not have additional rules and regulations, or it can go a little bit beyond. That's really the only distinction that I would make.
Okay, and I did mention chapter 69A. This is the Uniform Fire Safety Standards for Transient Public Lodging Establishments, Time Share Plans, and Time Share Unit Facilities. Again, information that we can find online, or we can provide at public record. Okay. Moving on to question four, can Denellen benefit from the short-term rental ordinance having language closely aligned with Florida state laws and statutes to avoid legal challenges? I think we've all heard the legal challenge argument pop up, so can we agree that we would like to have our language closely aligned with state laws and statutes when, when feasible to avoid legal challenges?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. And I know that we have been busy researching other cities, implications of the ordinances of other cities, challenges that they've come upon, so that we can really be prepared with many different scenarios on what we might face. Slide five, does Florida state laws and codes require fire safety and building code inspections to be performed annually on short-term rentals?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know.
Jim?
Of course.
Yes. Okay. So we'll provide a little extra information. All, let's see, yeah, all short-term rentals must comply with Florida building code, Florida fire prevention code, Florida statutes, Florida administrative code, and Denellen code enforcement. We know that, we know that this is a yes, correct?
Yes, in that what the fire code does, certain, in, in, in specific, specifically to short-term rentals, certain bedrooms and so forth have a mandate and a requirement. So the city does have a little bit of leeway when it comes to inspections. There is an inspection that is required every year of short-term rentals, and that's supposed to be done by the state, but the date of the state, as we've discussed in the past, only does it if there's a violation. So, you know, this is an area where Denellen has some discretion, but certainly some, probably most do require inspections just by the nature of the structure and how many people they accommodate. So a little bit nuanced, but generally speaking, you know, there is an inspection that is required, state inspection at very least.
Okay, so the five of us have agreed on that, correct?
I guess I'm confused.
Oh.
To me, an inspection is somebody's going to, it's scheduled once annually, it's scheduled once a year, somebody comes in, inspects, checks off the checklist. What I'm hearing you say is unless there's a...
There are certain specific rules for different kinds of structures, so it's a little bit more nuanced than just a general type of rule.
Okay, so like two-story versus single-story?
Right, or so many bedrooms and that sort of a thing. There's, and there's different kinds of inspections. So just to kind of give you a little bit more information, you know, if there's a modification that's made to a, a building, they have to get a permit for it, there needs to be a building inspection, right? Certain kinds of structures need to be fire inspected every year. Now, you can mandate that other ones are, okay? But some do need to be inspected every year. So that's an area where there's a little bit of, you know, some differences there. Now, when it comes specifically to short-term rentals, the state mandates that there's a state inspection every year, but the state doesn't, the state agency doesn't do it every year unless there's a complaint, even though it, the law seems to read, when you read it, it should be done every year. So there's a little bit of a deviation in practice versus what the law actually says. I don't know how else to say it, because it's crystal clear, but that's what's happening right now, and so that's what I'm reporting.
Now, I'm not looking to miss word, but you know, does it say should, or does it say shall?
I'd have to pull it up so I can quote it to you, but it is mandatory language.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question also for Andrew. Again, it's going back to the same word there, require. Now, if the state requires this to happen, but then say, for example, Marion County, fire and safety, which we presume at this time would be carrying out these inspections, they can't do it because they don't have staff, then who should be punished? The person who is trying to get their inspection done within this timeframe? That's going to be...
I think that's something that, that I could address, and I don't know if somebody wants to talk about after, but I can, I can jump into it right now if that's okay with council. And that actually boils down to one of the suggestions that I would have with this ordinance. And, and I don't want to jump in and have been asked that yet, but to me, it makes a lot of sense to phase this kind of regulation in, because right now, the city can't do certain things. The city's not capable of performing fire inspections today. We know that. We've talked about that. The city needs to take some time to make arrangements so that it can fulfill the requirements of its code and state requirements, and to get those inspections in. So one solution to that is if the city unanimously, or if you all, majority of you want to adopt some sort of regulations, we know that registration is the crux of it. You can adopt registration, the city can work in the, you know, the meantime, over the next several months of fixing its inspections issues, and then build that in at a later point in time when the city can conduct the inspections. Because yes, to your point, to create additional legislation right now mandating inspections when there's still an outstanding issue, you know, it's something, we seriously could do that, council could do that, but, and you're spending time trying to fix the issue, right? To me, one option is, that I would present to you all, is we'll go ahead and fix the issue first and then create that legislation, but your hands aren't tied in the meantime. You can still make progress going forward in deciding the things that you want to do, and still get something on the books, because it has been a year and a quarter so far that this has been out there, and there's nothing on the books yet. I hope that, does that answer everything? I know that said a lot.
Yeah, I would just add that I think that this idea of this step approach is, is something that will broach together, but as far as the inability of the county to provide these inspections right now, that we do have a contract with them, and I think it's very recent that it's come to our attention, that we have some work to do to work it out, but right now, we do have a contract that says that they will be doing our inspections. So I think, I wouldn't say we can't do it, I would just say that we really need to work out what's going on with that county contract.
Julie, and this would be a time to make a suggestion, that I was talking to Jim about towards reviewing what we're going to do.
Would you mind just jotting a note down and holding on to it?
I found it.
Okay, because I just don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and say that because we found a, because we found an issue with our contract with the county fire inspection, that we can't do it, because I don't agree with that. Okay. Thanks, Rex. Slide six. Should short-term rental ordinance be based on current Florida state laws and statutes rather than predicting future changes in the laws?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I think that would be absolutely a necessity.
Okay, so we know that there was some proposed ideas through the state that did not pass. They could come up again in a year, or two, or five, or 10, or never, but we would write our ordinance based on current Florida state law, and then we would revise it along with all of the other cities in Florida if it changed. And it sounds like we're all in agreement on that. Great, because we can't, we can't really guess what's going to happen next year.
And I think, can I just say one word? I think the key word in that statement is can be. It's not, again, the, I, I believe, and again, Andrew, would you back me up or tell me if I'm wrong, can be revised, but there's no necessity that we would have to revise.
If the state went in a direction and preempted a portion, let's say the city adopted a comprehensive ordinance, don't even discuss the details of it, but let's say there's a particular area in there where the state says, no, local government, you can't preempt it, and they don't provide a provision that says, sometimes what the state will do is say, any ordinance is enacted prior to the state, our grandfather did, you can't change them, you can keep them on the books. Unless they put that clause in there, the city may have to make some changes. It just depends on what the Florida legislature says, and if they make their rules retroactive or forward-looking. Just as an example, to make it clear, in this last legislative session, the, what was discussed by, you know, one of the houses, was creating regulations and limitations on what cities can do, further, you know, constraining cities from what they can do versus what they could do in 2014. And of course, that didn't pass, but if it had, then yes, if the city had adopted certain things that weren't in line with that legislation, then the city would have to make changes to it. But then, you know, they can also say, hey, everything in the past, as they did in 2011, for instance, is a great example, they said, hey, if you have a short-term rental ordinance on the books, then you can keep it, but nobody else can make any rules going forward. And then they reversed course and said, in 2014, no, now you can make rules. But that's an example of two very different ways that the state legislates that I can distinguish for you.
Great, and we were unanimous on number six?
Yes.
Slide seven. Can Denellen benefit from identifying short-term rental businesses and implementing standards for these businesses within the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Remains to be seen.
Tim?
I'm kind of with Jan. I'm waiting to see how this whole thing falls out, to see what the, what the benefits are versus the expense versus the resources required.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak to any of the benefits that they think could come from such an ordinance, briefly?
Just setting the standard for all short-term rentals to operate under, that a short-term rental in one place in town has to operate under the same rules, have the same inspections, have the same guidelines to operate as somebody else. I do think it would be a benefit for all the short-term rental businesses to operate under one set of rules. Right now, without any rules, they can kind of operate how they want to. So having standard rules makes a lot of sense. I think the biggest thing that I see with this is, well, there's a couple of things. One is right now, we have an awful lot of short-term rentals that are not, one, registered with the state, which is required, whether we do anything or not. And by our ordinance requiring them to register with us as part of that registration, they must prove to us they've registered in Tallahassee, makes a whole lot of sense that those people have registered and notified Tallahassee that they're operating a business within the state.
That's right. That's right. And that those who registered but then didn't re-register and are now delinquent would also be caught, so that would be a benefit to the ordinance. I also see some other safety. I think that when we write the ordinance and we do things like inspections and accountability, that it becomes safer for everyone, safer for the person living here, safer for the people visiting. We know that safety is good for business, and it will make our destination of short-term rentals more attractive. I think that it could, this ordinance could potentially alleviate tensions between residents and short-term renters, for those people who are living in communities surrounded by these, that it could address some of that. I think that the ordinance could perhaps decrease the work for our local police department when there's lots of calls for noise and other things on short-term rentals. By having the ordinance and by assuring that the expectations are delivered by every short-term rental owner consistently, it may result in less calls to our police department. Another benefit is that we can help short-term rentals fit into our existing communities. So I, as a person living in Denellen, would like to maintain the intact nature of my community, and I think that this could, could at least help with some preservation. It would also, our ordinance could also protect the interest of taxpaying citizens. Any other ideas on possible benefits from the ordinance?
Well, unfortunately, all people are different, and some people, the sky in their world is not blue, and they see things normally, different than we see. And what they want to do is something that could be detrimental to all the other short-term rental owners, to where you start getting bad reviews, like, there were too many people on the river, they had a massive party there every weekend, you're not going to get quiet, you're going to hate it, and then their bookings start to drop. And to those people, what they're doing is perfectly normal. So what we need is, is a set of rules so that we can say, these are the limits, because some people just have no limits. It's what I want to do. So in the long term, when you look, it's really a safety net to preserve the value and the equity of both the short-term rental people and the people who live in the neighborhoods.
Well said.
Very well said.
I'd like to make just a comment on this statement, and that is that a lot of these problems that are occurring with short-term rentals are like right now, immediate problem. And therefore, would a ordinance really correct those like right now situations when they can be addressed by our, again, as I have said before, our law enforcement? And I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but there was a, there was a case, Portsmouth, New Hampshire case, Supreme Court, New Hampshire case.
Can I stop you? That's got nothing to do with Florida.
Has nothing to do with Florida.
You said New Hampshire. That has nothing to do with Florida.
Okay, we're sticking to the question on slide seven. Can Denellen benefit from identifying short-term rental businesses and implementing standards for these businesses within the city?
And I'll just stay with my statement, remains to be seen. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Wally, I get your point. Slide eight. Are there benefits to having an application process for short-term rental business owners, followed by proof of satisfactorily completed inspections and other documents annually?
Yes.
Yes.
Remains to be seen.
Okay, so the application process so that we're ensuring that inspections and other documents are received? Yeah, I guess I would just refer to Florida statute 509.241, section one. There are penalties for operating these businesses without licenses. So by the city having an application process and making sure that the business licenses are in order and...
And I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but there was a, there was a case, Portsmouth, New Hampshire case, Supreme Court, New Hampshire case.
Can I stop you? That's got nothing to do with Florida.
Has nothing to do with Florida, but certainly...
You said New Hampshire. That has nothing to do with Florida.
Okay, we're sticking to the question on slide seven. Can Dunellen benefit from identifying short-term rental businesses and implementing standards for these businesses within the city?
And I'll just stay with my statement, remains to be seen. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Wally, get your point. Slide eight. Are there benefits to having an application process for short-term rental business owners, followed by proof of satisfactorily completed inspections and other documents annually?
Yes.
Yes.
Remains to be seen.
Okay, so the application process, so that we're ensuring that inspections and other documents are received? Yeah, I guess I would just refer to Florida statute 509.241, section one. There are penalties for operating these businesses without licenses. So by the city having an application process, and making sure that the business licenses are in order, and we already talked a little bit about the benefits of inspections, I would say that there are benefits to the application process.
I think it's very important to really have a method of doing this. When I was in Miami, with Miami Firehouse, as a lieutenant, and I was assigned to the armed office, and my job was to, whenever something happened, and they needed the addresses and stuff. Transient short-term rentals generally have nobody, they have people in there who don't know the area. They have people in there who don't know the neighborhoods or anything else. If something happens in there, this gives us a way to be able to contact the person of responsibility, so we, we have somebody we can call. Suppose there was a major fire and something happens, and we have no way to reach them because they never registered. Suppose something else happens, and stuff like that does happen occasionally. But it gives us a, for if there's wires down, where, where they have to make an adjustment, so that they can fix something, so that it doesn't cost them in the future. So to be able to have a database, to where we can contact the responsible people, and let them know, this is going on on their property, because the people there may, may not know, or, or we will not be able to contact the Airbnb, or whatever they're using as their intermediary.
Great, so I would say that that is a benefit.
I'd like to just make one comment to Rex's statements, and that is, who's going to respond if there's a problem at 1:00 AM on a Saturday?
That is a specific question that we're going to talk about within our ordinance, but I don't want to get specific about the ordinance today, because the idea here is to just put some ideas to guide us. So that will come up again, and it's, I think it's listed in the ordinance under responsible party. So that might be a section for you to review before another workshop, and then you can learn a little, you know, you can study that response a little bit, and see what you think about it. Slide nine. Do we want the entire process to be cost-neutral to the city taxpayers?
Yes.
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 I would comment on this on saying, how would we accomplish that? That would be the answer, yes or no. And that's a pretty complicated question at this time.
And I would say that we definitely have some, we have some brains on the job, thinking about ways that we can make this cost-neutral to the city taxpayers. As a city taxpayer, city taxpayers aren't benefiting from these short-term rentals in really any way. I know there's sometimes an argument about sales tax, but that really falls short, because we know that that's county-based. When the short-term owners register, they pay the county a 4% tourist development tax, that's not benefiting Dunellen. So, I think making it cost-neutral is imperative. And again, as the process goes on, and we talk about the fees, and we do resolutions for the fees, we'll learn a little bit more about the ways that we're going to try to make this happen. And if you object, or if anyone objects at that time, then maybe you'll have different suggestions. Okay, so I, I hear four want to keep the entire process cost-neutral, and the jury's out with Jan, which is fine. We'll learn a little bit more about that. Okay. So, that was my collection of questions, to sort of lay the groundwork, so that when we have future workshops, and we talk about, for example, hard-wiring fire detectors, and we're maybe having some discussion, I might go back and say, we all voted that we were going to stick with the safety regulations proposed by the state, or whatever it is from the previous slide. So are we all on the same page so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then we'll move into some questions about how we want the ordinance to look. And I think this is really going to help Andrew, and help the city staff, and help us to have a document that's easy to manage. Will we choose to include all requirements of the short-term rental owner in the ordinance, to avoid confusion or extra work of research for the owner? And what this means is, we wouldn't say, see city ordinance on pets, or check with the building safety for what you need inspected. No, we would be providing checklists, we would be incorporating everything into our ordinance, that we are expecting of the short-term rental owners, trash, pets, parking, as opposed to leaving it out.
I agree.
I also agree.
Think it all needs to be in there, Wally?
No.
Okay.
This is my opinion.
You have thoughts on it?
Yeah, I think, and when I say that, there's a lot of things that I think should be included. But when you say, should have all requirements, I think we end up with an ordinance and a set of rules, that right now are 14 pages, that could grow into 50 pages. And I get a little concerned with that. What I would rather see is that we make it very clear, like with fire inspections, you need to have a fire inspection by a qualified fire inspector, every year, and if you pass, that's it. That, to me, eliminates talking about hard-wired smoke detectors, because that's in the inspection, so we don't need to include that in our ordinance. So see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And it's the same thing, really, I mean, and building inspection is the same thing. You know, you, I don't know how to really put this in words, but instead of outlining, okay, everything in a fire inspection, you got to have hard-wired CO detectors, smoke detectors, exit signs, this, that, and the other, just say you must be in compliance with the National Fire Protection Act checklist. And if it's signed off, you don't need all that stuff in your ordinance. That's my opinion. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, and the same with the building inspection, if there's something in your building inspection that says you got to have handrails on stairways, and balconies, and stuff, well, in fact, in Florida, there's a special rule, balconies, and that kind of stuff. But anyway, if you pass that inspection, and everything in that inspection, if you pass, we don't need to put in our ordinance. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
Now, the rest of this stuff, yeah, I think it all, I mean, if it, if you can't readily go see what the inspection, or what the law says, and it's very clear, to me, you got to put that in your ordinance. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'd like to add to what Wally said, and I agree with Wally. And I found out something yesterday, actually, I got an email from someone that I had no idea, and I don't think anybody else knows here, and that is, the fire inspecting official that would come from Marion County, would look at your fire extinguisher. Your fire extinguisher must have a up-to-date certified stamp on it, not from Marion County Fire Safety, but from a company that is licensed by the state, and all they do is, is go around and examine and stamp that fire extinguisher, because a short-term rental is a commercial enterprise.
Exactly.
That's not in the ordinance. I mean, there's a lot of little things that aren't in this ordinance, that the owner needs to comply with.
Wally, if I could clarify my agreement?
Sure.
I was on a little bit of a different page than what, and on the longer line of thinking, I was thinking if we're going to add something that folks would not know about city ordinance, and we would add that language in there, so it would be plain, as far as a checklist, and verbiage from state requirements, whether it's building inspection, fire inspections, we would have to keep up with those non-stop. Every time they change, we'd have to go in and change. So I don't think it would be appropriate for us to put that kind of detail in there.
No, I totally agree with you, because again, I didn't, I kind of cut it off, but you're right. If the city has an ordinance, and it's not readily available or understandable by the citizens, or the owners of these, then yeah, we probably need to spell that out, because it's, that's, they're not going to be easily found. But to me, we're, we're having these inspections done, I know in reading our ordinance, we have all these rules, again, about fire detection, CO detection, all these kind of things, and, you know, if that's in their fire inspection, I don't think we need to repeat it in our ordinance, is what I was getting at. But clearly, Jim, I agree with you, that if it's not something that's readily available, and they can go find, and, who knows? I have enough trouble trying to find our ordinance as well. So, anyway, what I'm trying to say is, yeah, I agree with you. If it's something that's not spelled out, that's easy to find, either we got to come up with a checklist, and provide it as part of the ordinance, or we got to put it in the ordinance. I totally agree with you.
Super. Not really, when we get to those parts of the ordinance, we're going to be able to, you know, know that we had this discussion, and get, get everybody, you know, on board. So, really excellent points of discussion, thanks for that. The next slide is pretty simple. Will we address concerns voiced by city residents related to various common issues within the ordinance, like parking, pets, noise, and trash?
I think we should, but I also think these should be very clear in our own city ordinances, for all residents, not just short-term rentals. And I'm not sure they are.
Right. I'm with you, Wally, on that very same note. Many of these, pets, noise, trash, those are already taken care of by our ordinance. Parking, I'm not sure what we really have there. But if Christmas comes around, or somebody has a birthday party, and a resident has a bunch of family over, don't have enough space, they put three cars in their front yard for a day, but we don't allow short-term rentals to do that, it just seems conflicting with me.
So, Tim, I would go back to an earlier slide, when we had the question, can, can short-term rentals be regulated different than traditional residences under Florida state law? And I totally agree that the city has a long way to go, to get our parking on par across the city. But if I'm not mistaken, we would have, you know, would be within our purview to say, a car for every bedroom, or a limited number of cars for a short-term rental, so that at the time of application, or registration, or whatever we call it, we could get an idea of how many cars go with the short-term rental, and where will they appropriately be parked. I think if we get into this, well, if we can't do it the exact same for everybody in a birthday party, I feel like we're definitely going to lose a little bit, lose a little bit of an opportunity there, knowing that parking with short-term rentals is a real sticking point of a lot of people living here.
Okay, okay, well, so when we get to these particular details in the ordinance, we'll work on them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think having the discussion now, and knowing that, like, hey, that's a really good point, but also, we can make it a little, a little different than an average residence. It will help that we have this conversation later down the line.
No, I just, I well understand your point, within our purview, but, I'm good.
Do you have anything to add to that, Andrew? No? It sounds accurate?
Yes, right now, parking, you know, you can go in the directions that you want to go, you know, constitution, constitutional limitations, so, you know, these are, these are options. One, one thing I would point out, with some of these, if they're, and if these are clearly different regulations, or add-ons to existing regulations, then those can be in the ordinance, but some of these things, and elsewhere, even if there aren't add-ons, or even if there are, providing information at registration is always helpful, I think, to those who are being regulated. You know, when they come in and they do their application, well, they know that, but they probably still haven't read the ordinance. They get a copy of the ordinance, they get a copy of, you know, the city's general noise ordinance, all the city's general ordinances that apply to them, as well as the state regulations, because those are going to be different for each structure, right? And they get a copy of that, so they have all that on file, and they have been informed. And that's part of the registration fee, they just get a stack of information. I think that would really go in line with what you're all discussing, and be very helpful.
Thank you.
Will we address concerns voiced by short-term rental owners related to various common issues within the ordinance, like excessive personal information, sexual predator issues, and human trafficking training? I guess what I would say about this is, there's already been some suggestions on how we can address these in different ways, to kind of take the stickiness out of our ordinance, and I don't want to get into specifics about how to do that today. But I guess just an example I would give, that you had shared, Andrew, was like sexual predator issues. If we could perhaps consider a citywide ordinance that would take care of this, that would be appropriate to something that would need to span citywide, and it could capture some of the important parts of sexual predator issues. I think the excessive personal information is something we've heard a lot from short-term renter, short-term rental owners, and I definitely think it's something that I feel we're going to be able to have a conversation and compromise on pretty readily. But everyone agrees that we should be addressing the common complaints of the short-term rental owner?
Absolutely.
I had, I got the opportunity to talk to several of the short-term rental owners, and one thing that they pointed out to me, I didn't know, is that they don't get a lot of information from the people who, like Airbnb, they get the client, what they're, where, when they're going to be renting, what the cost is, and they vet all these people. They check them out beforehand, and they've got lists of people that they share, that you don't want to rent to, and that they don't get, like, a lot of the things that we're asking for. So maybe, since they're not getting the information, I think it would be more troublesome to hold them for that information. Really, sexual predator issues, that, again, that's something we can address for the whole, for Dunellen, and the human trafficking, I understand the training is online, it's like $8.
Oh, it's a lot less than that.
Yeah, it's a state requirement, $3. And it's just basically, you watch a video, I believe, so it's, it's not this encompassing thing, where it's going to take an entire day, and it's just to make people aware, so...
Great, so we'll, we'll try to address those pain points of the short-term rental owners as we go along. So, the next section is proposed steps going forward, so we've had some discussions about what we want in it, what we want it to look like, so how do we, where do we go from here? Famously said in Alice in Wonderland, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. So, having an approach to this, and being strategic with our ordinance, to align things with our small community, is going to be key. Next slide. This is, this is what I'm proposing, and I did talk to Andrew a little bit about it, so I'm sure he's not real surprised to see his name on this slide. But I'm proposing that we have the attorney and staff prepare a document that we can reference, so that we're all on the same page. So we went through a full workshop with documents that maybe weren't exactly the same. So I would propose, painful as it is, that we start at the beginning, with a common document. Also, I brought this up after a meeting late one night, that when Andrew created the ordinance, it was kind of an à la carte, and he had put a lot of different things in it, and as it went through the process, it changed quite a bit. It spent a lot of time in planning, where things were taken, out, or changed, or altered. So my proposal is that we look, is that we keep the planning commission document nearby, so that we can incorporate the changes and suggestions by the planning commission, but that we actually review in real time on the document that was prepared in July by Andrew, because that's going to give us all of the options from the very beginning, that he thought were appropriate to Dunellen. Does anyone have any thoughts on the document that we're reviewing?
Yeah, I agree with this, first of all.
Thank you.
I think, is what, what you said was what I remember, that Andrew and his firm put together this document, was à la carte, everything, ditch and sink, had the whole thing. I think it was, in my view, in reviewing it, and now I've reviewed probably 15 other city ordinances, case law, and everything else over the last few weeks, that original document is, is very close to what a lot of cities have done. Now, again, there are a few things in there that we might want to take a hard look at, decide that we will keep them, that we want to... Do we wanna modify them? Do we wanna change them? Which we were just talking about, personal information, sexual offenders, and all that kind of stuff. Um, but I think starting with everything that's out there and basically eliminating the things we don't really want is a better way to start. No offense against planning zoning. Um, they have modified this, kept a lot of it, but they have added things, taken things out that I think, well, personally, I don't agree with. So I would really go back to the beginning and start over.
And I think that planning has made a lot of great suggestions that we will be able to integrate. But I think that we sort of have the advantage that this has gotten further down the line, that we're learning where exactly to go back in the state statute to, to determine, can we take this out or not? Um, so really basing our decisions of what stays in and what comes out on the facts and the Florida statute and the regulations, um, seems...
Oh, absolutely. In fact, this second item here lists the associated statutes, code, reference documents, whatever. Um, I've been working with someone else, and we have started that process.
Oh, is that right?
We have gone through and, yeah, I hadn't shared it with you because I can't, but.
Okay.
Anyway, uh, this individual and I have talked through a lot of it very candidly. They put a lot of work in this. We're not through. Actually, I sent it to Andrew and asked him to take a look at it and immediately called him and said, "Stop", because I don't know what's gonna happen tonight. But again, I think personally, if, if we can show the citizens and the short-term rental people that we're not making up rules, that there really is laws for what we're trying to do. We're trying to be reasonable and, and the, and the ordinance is backed up by statute, code, reference, or whatever. Um, I think I, personally, it's probably my law background, but I get more comfortable with what we're doing than to look down and go, "Gosh, I wonder where that came from." You know, and I have no idea. And citizens and short-term rental people don't have an idea either where this may have originated. It may be in the code. It may be in fire code. It may be in some Florida statute. I don't know. But if we can go through and at least identify where that particular item originates, then I think we can make a decision, do we really want it in our ordinance or do we not? That's my opinion.
Other thoughts on the document that we go forth with at the next workshop?
Yeah, I have, um, one comment. And, and basically, what I'm saying is representing, representing what I have heard, um, from people who are short, short-term rental operators, managers. And if you go to, um, page seven of fourteen, line, say around, it's line two seventy-three.
And I'd like... Stick real close to the question.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have my document with me.
Okay, I'm gonna read it. But first of all, I want us to look at this ordinance in the long-term perspect. There are some problems right now, without doubt, associated with short-term rentals. We hear about them. So we're coming up with this ordinance pretty much for immediate needs. I'd like everybody on council to think about how this ordinance will fit five, ten years down the road. And particularly, uh, in regard to enforcement. Because we're at the mercy right now of Marion County Fire Safety and their situation. They can't handle local. They can't handle belting right now. So we're gonna write this ordinance not knowing if these owners, managers of these short-term rentals will be able to comply with what is stated here on page... You know, I'm gonna read it, okay? You don't have it.
Okay, we're keeping it under two minutes.
Okay. Um, inspection, inspection by the city, meaning city of Dunellen, to verify compliance with the requirements of the article may be required subsequent to initial registration with the city. The owner shall allow the city to inspect the vacation rental within forty-five days after the city notifies the owner or responsible party that the city is ready to conduct an inspection. The city of Dunellen is not gonna be conducting these inspections.
Okay, so we're getting into the weeds on details. I agree that we need to look at it in a long-term basis, two years, five years, ten years. But I do not wanna, I, I wanna deter us from getting into very specific conversation about who's gonna do what. Because I think it's part of the larger picture that we're gonna be talking about down the line. But you're right, I think we do have to look over it long-term. We have to talk to other cities who have had this instituted in their cities, large and small, for two years, five years, ten years, twenty years. And we can learn how other people are managing it too. Because it's, it's definitely something that's, people have found a way to execute. And, and we'll be, you know, determining if we can do the same here. Any other thoughts on the document that we're gonna be using at the workshop?
I think it's a very good idea.
I have a couple myself. First January point is, uh, well-taken. Uh, we need to understand who's doing what and everybody's capability, whether it's the city, the county. You're right on to me. Um, I'll drill a bullets, uh, number two first. I think it's a necessity that, um, bullet number two is part of the document so everybody understands exactly where it's coming from. It's not, somebody's making it up, somebody wants this, wants that. Uh, the color coding will definitely help us out when we review. And, um, I have a question on the first bullet. Uh, just from my own understanding, it's kind of what we did in the first meeting. So we'll just kinda continue similar, going through the July nineteen copy, compare it to the planning copy, and just work through it.
So I'm proposing something a little different. I'm proposing that we start with a brand-new document, which is, uh, Andrew's original from July, that the planning commission document is next to you so that you can see their changes, but that we're actually going off of Andrew's original document, which will include everything that he proposed from the beginning. So the, the review will, in essence, start over in this document, uh, ORD twenty-two oh five, the planning commission, July nineteen. This is the document that was given to planning. So this is everything before planning started.
Okay, so the document that we went through the last meeting is also labeled, uh, "To Planning Commission, July nineteen, twenty-twenty-two".
That included planning commission changes. And that was part of the confusion at the start of the initial workshop.
Okay, I thought that was the original version.
Because generally what the staff does, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mandy, but they forward whatever came from planning. Because it was planning's job to review it, make changes, and give it to council for review. So that's what Mandy did. She gave us planning council changes for review.
Right, I'm with you.
And what I'm proposing is we take two steps back and look at the version that came out before the planning commission.
But use the planning commission as a reference to, if we wanna look back.
Correct.
Because they did put a lot of work in the back.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and I'm, I apologize to everybody.
You don't have to apologize. That's why we're here, to try and...
In my hand. And this is the one that, that I have, my own notes, I'll start, that my note says, "Start with this as a basis." It is, uh, "Staff recommended ORD twenty-two dash oh five, to Planning Commission, July nineteen, twenty-twenty-two." Um, so when we were going through the last meeting, that was the one I was using for a basis. Uh, the one I was using to compare it to is the, uh, one that the planning commission, um, worked up with, uh, the cross-house, with the underlines and all that. That, you know, we know what those all mean. Um, so I'm confused as to where Andrew is going to be creating a new version.
He's not gonna create a new version. And maybe I'll punt it to Mandy because she's the one who put the last one out. Can you explain it, Mandy?
What we published is what came out of planning.
Correct.
So then, with understanding exactly what she's talking about, you have the original ordinance that was put together by Andrew that had a lot of different parts and pieces that came from a lot of different other cities. And then planning added, deleted, changed.
Right.
So we have both of those versions. But what was presented to you back in January before you said, "Okay, we're gonna put this off until we kinda regroup and kick it down the road a little bit, come back and revisit it when we have a full council"? So the one that was originally presented to you in January was the one that came directly from the planning commission.
The December twenty version.
Because that is, yes, December twentieth, because that's typically the way we do things. They go, they start with it and the mo, whatever modifications. Because when they pass their resolution, recommending, recommending with changes or not recommending, something they push through, that is the document that we're presenting to you to say, "This is what's been approved by the planning commission."
Correct.
So I was afraid it might get very confusing if I gave y'all multiple versions of the ordinance. There's always the original that you can go back to. But that ordinance that came out of planning, December twentieth, you could identify the changes because they were all tracked change.
Right.
So that's the version that I gave you.
Okay. And here were my two concerns. Once, I thought we were getting them. When I'm here, we're gonna get a brand-new document, naturally, ka-ching, ka-ching, dollars go through the money. Okay, so that one's gone. Um, my other concern is, we went through quite a few of the rules, all right, in the last meeting. And we did that, at least, well, I shouldn't say "we", I did that using the July nineteenth as a basis. Uh, compared it to the planning version, all right, and had all my comments and everything we worked up during that meeting using those two documents. So where I'm going is, do we really need to start over with everything that we did last meeting?
Mike, two cents on that.
Yes, ma'am.
The first part, uh, when you refer to this new document, the, the only thing that we're asking that change is that Andrew adds some references to the document to help us know where different things came from. So the document, the contents of the document won't change, but he will add some clarifications of what the statute is or what the rule is. So that's when we talk about a different version that we would start with. I agree with you, um, that we use the doc, like, I agree with you at the last review. I was doing the same thing. I had planning document over here.
Right, looked like we were all doing it.
Okay, I was very confused during that meeting. Things were moving very quickly. And I felt as though I was trying to put a lot of things back in. So, um, you know, I'm sure that we can use a lot of the work that we did. But again, I left feeling, um, not feeling confident that we had really decided about things or...
Okay.
You know, I envision as we go through each section that we should come to some kind of consensus before we move on to that both us and the public knows exactly what we agreed to move forward with.
I agree, yeah. No, I'm, I'm following. Because unlike Tim, I think we all had the two or three versions. I actually had three versions on my head. And was trying to track while we were discussing what we were talking about changing. And again, I'd start with planning zoning, then I'd look back at the original, and then there was one in between. I had all three of them. And it was like trying to track it down. But I felt like I was keeping up, but it, it was very, very confusing. But again, I think the, the point I'm, I'm hearing is, wherever we start, whether it's planning zoning or whether we go back to the original, original, and put the various sites for the statute, code, regulation, whatever, put that in the document. And, and again, what I'm getting to personally is if I look down and there is not a reference, then I think we need to focus on that. Why isn't there a reference? Was this something the city dreamed up? Is this something other cities have put in that we've seen them do that we might wanna consider, but there's really no reg or law that backs this up? This is the kind of thing I'm looking for.
And conversely...
I'm a legal person.
If it says Florida state statute behind it, then you're gonna know, okay, well, we can move on from that because that's state statute.
Exactly, okay.
Okay.
But again, I do think we need to understand, you know, where we're gonna start. But I agree, I don't wanna back up, cover what we just covered. But I think having those sites in there, as I put them, uh, law, reg, code, whatever, even if it's Dunellen code, uh, that we know where it's coming from. Now, whether we go back to the original, original one, or start with the one, planning zoning, because I think I've got them both right here. Because I don't know where we're going.
Yeah, and I'll leave it open to discussion for which... But I think we really wanna be adamant that we decide on the proper document. Because to get here and know that we've been looking at different things makes it very difficult to review.
Yeah, well, I'm on board. And I'm on board with the July nineteen document.
Okay.
And Andrew, you'll help us to fix this document up so that we can have some references within?
I can. I think a lot of the citations in here are taking a state statute, maybe going a little bit further. But still, the citation can go in there to where it came from. And then, you know, we can decide whether you want to go further or it's just better to keep it as the state statute, you know, and take the, the reference out. Because, um, I, frankly, after all the discussion and so forth, a lot of these things and some things in the ordinance I would change. The original ordinance I drafted, not as, this is what I think you guys should do, but following instructions and the instructions I received, just showing all the things that you can do. There are some things in this ordinance that I think it's something you might be able, there's things in here that I think definitely should be in there. I don't have anything in here I think that you shouldn't do, you know, per se. But there are things in here that, you know, I think would be better left out and streamlined for the city. But I wanted you to have that consideration and be able to, because it's your ordinance of, of what you want it to be.
Well, I think...
So we can make the citation.
Andrew, you, you've said it exactly right. But again, as we progress, um, I think when it gets down to, you know, this is something you might wanna consider, but you don't need it, or you may not wanna go there, I'd like to hear that. And I'm sure everybody on council would. Because again, I'm, I'm focused not only on this ordinance, I'm focusing on how in the world we're gonna enforce this thing. And if it's so cumbersome, is it, is it code enforcement gonna enforce it? Is the fire inspector gonna enforce it? The building inspector gonna enforce it? The police department gonna enforce it? I think we've gotta have an understanding with this whole ordinance. Okay, once we get it, and we all agree, okay, this is a great ordinance, then how in the world we're gonna enforce it? And that's the other thing I'm...
What I could say is at the appropriate time, whenever you are ready for me to present certain aspects of it, and that might be a good next step. There's really eight different components to this ordinance. And it might, you know, help if we take a look at those eight and about the ways that you can do things. Um, because there's registration, inspection, the life safety so forth, which you may not even need in there, or you may want some things in there. Because a lot of it is covered by the state code. I could see the private info parking, sexual, and investing. And so if we decide we're gonna take something out, then, you know, that's a, a clear, clear direction right there. direction right there. When I break it down into the components and also give you options about how you wanna implement it, I think it even makes your work list a little bit shorter.
Right.
Um, and maybe go topic by topic instead of line by line, but if we add in the references, you have that choice. Do we wanna go topic by topic and say, hey, take this out into the line by lines?
Right.
You know?
Okay.
You have a lot of different ways that you can proceed.
That's helpful, and I think a lot of this came from, we weren't sitting here when the directives came down to start the project, so it's created a little bit of a disconnect, but I feel like this is a good way to marry it up. So, thanks for that. We look forward to your, uh, prepared document. Next slide. Uh, we should agree on the style and recording of council discussion to ensure clear outcomes. So, um, in going back to look after the meeting, we go back, like, for instance, the initial workshop that we had, um, being able to go in and see what we clearly decided upon or, or disagreed upon, um, what was changed during our work discussion, I think is really important. And when I looked at the last one, I didn't feel confident that, um, well, we weren't very definitive in how we were, um, making decisions. So, I just think that there has to be some real black and white of how the council is gonna make the decision and how the staff is gonna record it, um, so that when we finish a section, we are at a consensus to move on, and that when we look at the notes, we can clearly see, we can clearly see that.
Okay. I agree.
Anything else on, uh, steps going forward to, on the style and the recording of our discussion?
No, I, I think tracking changes is the way to do it. That way, again, and when we look back after the meeting, I know, I do, like I'm sure y'all do, review those changes and see how we've tracked them, we kinda, it reminds me anyway, how we got to where we got, and, and how we evolved to, this is what it said, and this is what we changed it, and this, seeing what we've lined out or added makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, going, being able to go back and listen to the meeting to verify things is helpful, and I also think that an amazing resource at our disposal is Julie Danowski's notes. It's, they're very clear often about who said what, it's amazing that she can do that in real time, and I think that she will be our friend through this process.
Good, Julie.
Uh, next slide. So, we'll, uh, schedule a workshop to review each section of the ordinance. Um, I'm trying to remember what I put this slide together for. Divisions from planning. Oh, yeah, we're gonna work in the planning, uh, the Planning Commission's ideas, which we already talked about. Andrew Hand will ensure that no steps are modified in conflict with Florida state statute. Changes will be concisely recapped before we move on from each section. Uh, staff is gonna document those proposed changes and publish those, um, before the following meeting, so that we can make sure we're on the same page. I don't have anything else there.
Yeah, well, it looks good.
And then upon full, complete review, the council will accept public comments, presentations, emails, and/or meetings with council for input. So, I know we are gonna have public comment after, uh, at the conclusion of this meeting. I would, um, ask how you all feel about, uh, perhaps holding off on public comment at the following workshops as we go through this, and upon full, complete review, we would then again resume public comments.
My thought on that, I, I don't have a problem with that, but I think as we progress through this, if we're not gonna allow public comment, I think there ought to be some way that the public can, for better, lack of a better term, download where we are. Uh, what I'm saying is, all right, we meet, we have a discussion, we kinda make some changes, and once those changes are made and tracked and whatever, that not only do we get a copy of them, but we post them on the city webpage, so anybody can access them to, to look at, so they can keep up with the track changes.
Yeah.
Again, I wanna make it real clear, nothing will ever get passed, uh, this council without public comment on every item, um, because public comment is extremely important.
I would like to say that this is an open, public meeting, and I know there are people sitting out here that came here to make comment, and to deny them that opportunity, that's a slap in their face.
And we will not deny them that opportunity today. It is on our agenda, and we will welcome comments. Uh, in recent meetings, we've talked about, um, often not being able to get through sections, not being able to get through the review, sometimes because there's a lot of public comment. And I know at the Planning Commission, sometimes there was 30 or 40 or 50 minutes of public comment. A lot of the comments that I'm getting are the same comments that I've had for the last six months, and they're things that I have carefully worked into my review. Um, I have taken every call from every short-term renter-owner, every resident, I've met with them, I've, um, you know, as I know others have, spent a lot of time hearing. I'm not hearing a lot of new things right now, and I'd like an opportunity to just get through the review of the ordinance. If others disagree, and majority feels that we should have public comment at each one, I'm definitely open to talking about that, too.
So, today, you're going to allow a comment?
It's on the agenda. We would, we...
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And we did check with Andrew, you may remember at the last meeting, and he said that it would be our right to work through the ordinance without public comment until we were completed, so legally, there really is...
Well, I, I agree with you. I mean, today, we'll definitely have public comment.
Because public comment is, is also public record, and I think that's why some people show up, they want their comments to be public record.
Absolutely.
Right, I get it.
Thank you.
I think if we do go forward and have other workshops and decide ahead of time, we're not gonna allow public comment. I mean, y'all can listen to it. I think we should publish that, so people don't sit here all night, like, stay home and listen to this on the radio, or Zoom it, or YouTube, or whatever, uh, because we won't be allowing public comment, but tonight, we definitely will.
Sure.
Okay?
So, can we make a determination about public comment at the next, uh, workshop meetings when we're reviewing the ordinance itself?
I'm fine with that.
With what?
With not allowing public comment till we're through, because I think it does slow things down. And then at the end, we'll definitely open it up for however long it takes.
If I was getting new information, I, I would not be suggesting this, but I haven't gotten new information in many, many months.
Right, yeah. I agree with that, and also, um, and again, public comment on whatever they wanna comment on. I'd like to see them at the end of the meeting, so we're commenting on the comments or, based on what we just went through, uh, some of the comments that are coming in or stuff that we haven't even looked at. Um, and, uh, again, one of my biggest issues with this is we have over $10,000 in this ordinance, and, um, and it looks like that we're gonna circle right back, go back to the Planning Commission, put them through it, and I just see this thing going around one more time. And, uh, we have to get, we, we must be efficient with this, um, and, um, and that is not to exclude it, you know, we up here need to be efficient, um, and we need to ask the same thing of the public, uh, because it's their tax dollars also. So, I don't, we don't wanna hear that they have something new, or they would allow us to get to that stage, those regulations, uh, and then comment on whatever decisions we have made would be very helpful.
I agree.
I disagree. I think that every meeting should be open to public comment. I don't think we're gonna get the huge, the people are gonna keep coming back and saying the same thing over and over again as this process continues.
Let's just clarify, Tim, when it goes back to planning, they only review for specifically what the council has asked us to review. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, so we might say to planning, please review our final ordinance to assure it's in line with comprehensive plan and zoning. That would be the only two things that they would be looking at.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes, that's, that's what the LPA and the Planning Commission is, your, your local planning agency, is, their primarily task is to review land development regulations and evaluate them for consistency with the comprehensive plan. So, if that's the council's wish, to keep that scope of review solely for consistency, and the consistency, you know, has been outlined in the whereas clauses, um, then they can just review that as opposed to going through a line-by-line analysis as has been previously done.
Okay.
So, I've heard someone suggest that we take public comment at the end of the workshop, workshops reviewing the ordinance. I've heard suggestion that we do not accept public comment during the workshops reviewing the ordinance, and I think that we need to come to agreement on what that will look like.
Okay. What do you want to, you wanna have a vote?
I would like to say, I think you, it would be beneficial to us at the end of the workshop to have some kind of public comment, because I would hate to sit out, to sit out there for an hour or two and listen, and then not have a voice, and a lot of times, the people, the people who we represent have really good ideas or a different interpretation of it than we miss, so I think that we, we do all of that.
I agree.
So, I'm hearing three people in favor of comment at the end of the workshop after the review?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
So, we'll agree that that will be it then?
All right.
Next slide. The next step would be the council would have at least, uh, one discussion before the first reading to evaluate and incorporate any feedback and fine tuning. So, we would be completing the ordinance with public feedback, we would then send it to planning for their sections, and then we would have at least one final discussion before the first reading. This would be an opportunity, again, for the public to talk about the final document. Is everyone in agreement with that? Okay. So, the next, uh, slide is things that the council will not, we're, we're almost done, there's just this one and one more, the things the council will not focus on during reviewing of the ordinance. Um, it's my hope, or my proposal, that we... Council, there's... Next one. Uh, there we go. That we wouldn't be talking about details of processes. These are things that are gonna sort of be, being discussed behind the scenes, things like, um, you know, our contract with the county fire inspector, or staffing issues, or, um, who's gonna do what. So, I would say that we would, I would propose that we not focus on details of the process, software needs, the city understands that we are likely going to need software and internal process to make this ordinance happen, and that's all being worked out behind the scenes. Exact forms and locations of forms, I sometimes get questions about where am I gonna find my form? Uh, again, those are all administrative things that are gonna be taken care of on staff end, um, and specific dates and deadlines. So, we need to pass the ordinance before we really come up with a timeline of what everything's gonna look like. So, again, all of these things will be addressed concurrently by staff, and will discuss, be discussed at the completion of the ordinance review. Final staff?
Um, for clarification, from my mind, um, details of the process, software needs, uh, software, people, resources, are all resources, um, that we need to figure out, um, because we, we need all that to figure out who's doing what, cost, et cetera. We're gonna do this stuff, though, before we vote whether we're in agreement with the ordinance or not.
I think it's a good point, and you're a process guy, so I appreciate you, um, initiating the discussion. My thoughts are that to get through the ordinance and understand what the ordinance looks like, maybe a separate conversation from all of the logistics, and, and you're, you make a good point, that taking care of those logistics before putting in motion. I guess I'm just proposing there be a separation from the ordinance, because what happens is we kinda go off on these tangents about, um, fire inspector, who's gonna do that? And then before you know it, we've gotten real far from the ordinance itself. So, I'm open to any suggestions on how to structure that, or how you best think that might work.
First suggestion I have is, on February, or, excuse me, July the 3rd budget meeting, we put in the budget, we're gonna buy the program for this item. You know what I'm saying? So, there's no question, we're gonna have to purchase a software program. And there, there are software programs out there, I learned today, that are already there that do this. Okay, but it is clearly something we gotta do if we're gonna pass this ordinance.
Okay. Um... If, if I make, well, play a Jan.
I, I don't, you know, like, this, this is kind of confounding for me, and that, that old expression, put in the cart before the horse, boy, is this ever an example? We have no idea, and I'm gonna go right, right back to what I've heard from Tim and Wally, who are the numbers guys, okay? I, I took a few courses in college, blah, 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 but we're at this point where this is, this is a, a vast undertaking, and Wally and Tim both have expressed on several occasions that anytime this city would go forth with any kind of project, that staff hours, meaning cost of labor, has to be incorporated into this process, and nobody's talking about this.
Well, Jan, I...
Not about software, yeah, you buy that, but then, everybody, somebody here on staff is gonna have to take care of this, and also code enforcement officer, and other part-time. Nobody's thinking about money, and Dan Ellen is not Sarasota, we are not Naples, we are not any other city. We have a 4.2 million budget, penny to penny budget. I'll tell you what, 4.2 million is not a lot of money. I rode racehorses in 1990 that might pay $4 million in a year.
I applaud you for...
That's our budget.
I applaud you for bringing it up.
How are we gonna do this?
I applaud you for bringing it up, Jan, and I already see Tim taking some notes so that we can have a full discussion. I think you're right, calculating the hours, and that's, we're having this discussion today, so that we can identify the point. I put this PowerPoint discussion together to try to get us organized, but that is not my wheelhouse. So, that's why I brought it today to have the discussion, so you're right, those are definitely things that we need to work out. Wally made a suggestion about the software. I would make a suggestion in October that we use our existing spot for a code enforcement officer, it's already in the budget. So, we do have some creative ideas, but today is our opportunity to come up with, um, ideas and suggestions going forward. So, thank you for that idea and suggestion, and I, I agree that having a full discussion about man-hours and money and time and cost is absolutely imperative.
Can I add something? In my review of all the codes and ordinances that are out there, it is legal for the city to charge 100% of the cost of administering this program to the short-term rental people. That's been settled in court. So, what I'm about to say is, if we have to hire people and we have to buy programs, that is not a, an expense of this city, it can be passed on to the short-term rental people. We cannot make profit, but we can cover our costs. And if you'd like the case law, I'll give it to you.
So, Wally, are you talking about, for instance, the price of the software, the price of the staff, the price of the, all of that would be rolled into...
Their administrative annual cost.
Yes, making it neutral to the taxpayer.
Exactly.
So, once again, taxpayers are not admitting.
Exactly. And that's another reason, even though there are 50 people registered in Tallahassee, only 24 have active licenses, I would suspect there's at least 50 people that have never registered, and it behooves all the short-term rental people to get everybody registered, so this cost gets spread upon 75 people instead of 24 in the conference.
I agree. Okay. Oh, what's Tim?
To me, this looks like any other project. The first step is figure out what the regulations are. Okay, once we figure out the regulations, I have to figure out everything from, uh, who's doing what, from, uh, registration, to tracking stuff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're gonna get to the point in this process where, uh, when we're done with the regulations, to where we need to know exactly who is doing what. We're gonna need flow chart and org chart, and then we will price, uh, against all of those items, and that needs to be done, in my opinion, before there's a, there's a vote on whether we're gonna do the ordinance or not. I, I understand that we can pass on the charges and everything, but I think we need to know what the whole animal really looks like before we just say we're gonna pass on charges, um, and really understand what the benefits are, uh, for this versus the charges. Um, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm not biased one way or another, I just want it to be, uh, I want it to be right, I want the process to be right. Um, I don't think we can leave these things out after the vote and then come back. I agree with Jan, I think the cart will be before the horse in this, uh, instance, that we need to have all of this vetted out, and then have a vote at the end, once all these details are complete, um, step by step, but, uh, these details have to be part of the process, in my opinion.
Jan, at what point, since this is kind of your wheelhouse, at what point do you think it's most, makes most sense to have that discussion within the process? Is that before the...
Uh, no, I guess what I thought we were gonna do was, right, in my mind, is we would do like we did in the, the last meeting, we'd be going, we would go through the regulations, uh, I understand the little changes we're gonna make, and completely agree. Then after the regulations, we're gonna have to get down to who's enforcing... Then, after the regulations, we're gonna have to get down to who's enforcing. I mean, exactly who's enforcing. Who is, uh, what software is out there that we need to do, you know, tools? What staff, what positions on staff are gonna do exactly what? Who in the county is doing exactly what? So, there needs to be an org chart, flow chart, whatever you want to call it. Otherwise, we're going into this really not understanding the entire thing. My opinion is, this is gonna be not more difficult, but as or more time-consuming to figure out and get it right than the regulations themselves.
Okay, so I heard you saying that we would have that discussion after we complete the ordinance, but prior to voting on the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Does everyone agree with that? Jan, you feel like that could address some of your questions?
Yeah, but I think, um, we're, we're kinda trotting along here too fast. And I think one thing that would be of great importance, we did, did our homework, and that is, go to smaller cities, see if, if they have, you know, cities that have SDR ordinance, and, and see what it's costing them.
I think we've contacted many, 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 so we should be able to get that information.
Let's get it in. Let's, let's look at those numbers.
Next slide. The last step would be, I know this is a difficult one, but developing a timeline. If anyone, you know, if we think it's realistic, again, these are just my ideas, but proposing some, some dates so that we can at least have a end site, a goal in sight. We may have to add a bullet because we're gonna have a meeting to talk about the costs and logistics. But I would just encourage us to make a timeline.
So, the first bullet would be, I think Andrew is the one that would have to answer that. New draft for review?
I think that depends on where council wants to go. I don't think it takes a long time to add in citations and so forth. And it also depends on, and I don't... It also depends on if you decide to do things in phases. But if you're gonna look at the ordinance, that, I don't know if the fate, well, I think it just depends on your, your directions. I, I don't wanna tell you, if you give me some direction on how you want to go, if you wanna phase it versus if you want to go line by line, because it sounds like now we're talking line by line. That kind of changes that conversation a little bit. It will not take long to provide citations. But, part of the citations as well, if we want to have sexual trafficking, trafficking, if we're gonna take that out, then, you know, there wouldn't necessarily be citations, for instance. Or if we're just gonna start with the registration, maybe pull some of this out and start with the registration. That would look different. You see what I'm saying? And so, I, I just kinda wanna see what you want to do, it really, I don't, and I don't wanna tell you what to do, so...
I think that's a good point, Andrew. Then, one of the next decisions I think that we need to make is if we're gonna do this in a step form or not. I don't, I don't know if everyone's clear on what that means, but start with the step of simply the registration, because there are a lot of short-term rental businesses right now that aren't even registered with the state. So, do we wanna start with that first step of the, of the registration process and getting the inspections in line, and then think about the rest later? Or do we wanna look at it as a whole and try to move it forward all at once? Those are the two options. Correct, Andrew?
Yes, exactly. I, I think, um, and, and that really depends on your timeline, right? Because if you wanna have a finished ordinance, let me, let me give you a couple scenarios, if that's, if that's okay. For instance, if you just wanted to start with the registration ordinance, that would be easy to basically cut this down, whittle it down to basically brass tacks. Here's what you have to do for registration, occupancy, and all that stuff wouldn't be in there. And, and I could do this at the same time. So, at the next workshop, whenever that is, you could take a look at that and even get started on that one. And then, review each other one section by section, or line by line. It just, and you would, it, that can complicate things a little bit, but it also makes it easier in other respects, because you're gonna have, it's adding more drafts. You see what I'm saying? Because you would have a whole new ordinance that is essentially skeletal to what you're seeing now. It's just, here's the registration process. But with the color coding and so forth, I can try to create something workable where, and you can go back and visit things. And so, for instance, one timeline might be, we're in June now, we have July coming up. If the line-by-line thing kinda continues, you probably will not have an ordinance working by the end of the year because of the adoption schedule and how long it's gonna take to go over everything. But if you start with a registration ordinance right now, and you can settle on that, I think within two or three months, depending on the planning commission schedule, you could have something in place for January, and then continue to go through some of these other issues and then build and add on the ordinance. If that makes sense.
Yes.
And, once the inspections are done, whatever, at that point in future, you'll be getting feedback from your inspectors of what problems are, and you can kind of add those out there. Because we know that the state legislation is comprehensive, and that's a good place to start instead of adding other things on there. So, I guess, there's recommendations and so forth that I could, I can make if those are areas you wanna entertain, but I kinda wanna see where you all are going first before I start, you know, sure, giving you recommendations. That's kind of abstract, but I hope that makes sense.
Makes a lot of sense, right? In fact, as you and I talked earlier today, one of the cities that has struggled with this is the city of Marco Island. I've actually talked to the people down there, after I've read all the information I could find. They passed their original ordinance in December of 2022. It is still not in effect, okay? After they passed it, um, there was a little controversy about it. And where they ended up is what Andrew's saying, is even though they had the full ordinance passed, they went back and pretty much said, okay, we're gonna get everybody registered by June 30th of 2024. And the final ordinance won't take place until January 8th of 2024, okay? And again, this is working not only within their city, but with the short-term rental folks. And I'm sure they picked January the 8th of '24, because that was after the New Year, and people that come there for the New Year's holiday don't have to deal with this, to be honest with you. But what I'm saying is just looking at, and they actually have been sued three different times. And they've been successful, but it does-
Sorry, Andrew.
Okay. They have been successful in those suits, but what I've learned is, finally, the city sat down with the people that were involved in these lawsuits, and they negotiated this transition. And, and what it showed me was what Andrew's suggestion is, we go through and maybe get an ordinance together, but have it phased into where, okay, we get everybody registered. And again, I look at that as probably our biggest problem. Right now, we have a lot of businesses, and I can't even speculate how many, that are operating in the city of Dunellen that don't have registration with the state of Florida. And if we and our ordinance require them to register with us, and as part of that registration proves to us they've registered with the Department of Business and Professional Practice in Tallahassee, then at least we know they're registered there, and they're paying their taxes. Otherwise, we have no idea. And we also don't have any idea how many people we're talking about, or how many short-term rental people we're talking about. So, I agree. I think that as we work on this ordinance, and I think we should keep working on it, that whatever we do, we have an ordinance that goes into effect, requires everybody to register and get the registrations done, which would include registering with the state of Florida, which they currently don't do. And then, after that, I think we'll have an idea, again, how many people or how many businesses are running out there as short-term rentals that we have? And then, how do we regulate that number? And to what extent do we need software, people, and all this to manage this? That's just my thought.
I think, um, we're talking a really sensible approach to this now. And I am in agreement with Andrew's plan, the skeletal type of ordinance. Because we can put it in effect more quickly. And as Wally had said, and I know, I think, I think we're all on the same page is, get them registered and get them to a point where they know they're gonna have to have that inspection and be ready for it. And leave it at that, and you know what? We might not have to go any further. Sit back and see what happens.
I'd just like to give it a little more thought and consideration, and we could maybe check in at the next meeting to see where we all stand with that.
Sure. But back to your timeline, I think definitely get Andrew to give us the sights and all that important. I think, to me, we, we look at it, but I think personally, I think we need to focus, and I know everybody's not there yet, focus on getting everybody organized and get everybody registered here in Dunellen, including, of course, that means they register in Tallahassee. And then, again, I think that would help me personally understand, are we talking about 50 people which show up on this list? Or are we talking about 150 people that don't own this list? And I'm beginning to think there's a lot of folks on that list. But again, even after we require registration, if they're not registering in Tallahassee and are willing to face a $1,000 fine and still don't register, I don't know what we can do other than make our fine worse. And maybe we ought to consider that. But again, that's all we gotta do in registration, is just find if they don't register.
Yeah, I just wanna keep reiterating that there's a lot of people who registered that are delinquent, and delinquency needs to be addressed.
Over half of them, I have to list.
I know, we do.
I have to list more.
Me too. So, Andrew, what, what I'm hearing is that by the meeting next week, we would be able to give you some direction if we're in favor of the step plan or not, and that would drive your next steps. Does that make sense?
Sure, it could even be a consensus tonight if you knew that's where you wanted to go, or next week is fine. And, and I think, from what I'm hearing now, what I would, I think the solution that I would propose is I would take this 2019 ordinance that everybody seems that they wanna work on, that original one, and add, of course, the citations in, and you'd have that document. Also, within that document, what can, what can happen? I can create an ordinance that just has the registration basics. Maybe not even the inspections, since we have the inspection issue in the city, and just create that ordinance. And what I can do with the ordinance that you all are working on is color-code that. I'll show you why I took those sections out. And so, that could be your first step. And then, you can continue working on the other version, and see if you like, you know, the, the registration process that's essentially the same stuff, just short.
Right.
I think your next step would be getting the inspections in. Once things are worked out, and things are working, you know, there's arrangement with the county or if the city has to contract with somebody else. And basically, you've already seen, the inspection part needs to change, because the inspection part was written for enforcement of the ordinance, and it was written in a way that, at the time, council didn't know if it wanted to do inspections. I'm hearing that you all want to do inspections. So, that language would change. Well, we can do a single-page inspection ordinance when you are ready. And that can be part of the discussion in the workshops as you're going through. And then, a third ordinance could basically be taking, taking what's left over. If you have specific, and, you know, this could happen this year, it could happen next year, depending on whenever you're ready. But the, the building and life safety section, if you want to have one, you know, based on whatever's in here, or what you're hearing from inspectors, presumably if they're getting inspected, if we, if we're at that point. As well as the other issues that you all wanna tackle, you know, that are, if you wanna make changes to the noise ordinance, if you wanna make changes to parking, if you wanna make changes to that, that can all be that third part of the ordinance. So, yeah, I think what you would be seeing, or what I would propose, is just two versions. The 2019 with your annotations, uh, and that new ordinance that you can kind of, you know, push through now, if that's what you wanna do, while continuing to review the rest of that. Sounds like something that you're all comfortable to.
We're gonna meet next week anyway, so I think we can all think about it on the 3rd. I think we need to have a good idea, okay, do we step this in, or do we still try to go forward? And we can all think about it. Again, before I read mainly the cases where people are suing, and pretty much everybody's getting sued. And fortunately, most cities are winning, which, that's good. But I think some of these cities are learning a lot, along the way, that phasing it in makes a lot of sense. Just to get the all around, how many people are talking about, and gradually phasing it in and working with short-term rental folks to understand what the rules are, and give it them time to work through them.
Well, I appreciate everyone's patience in my interruption of the process to try to present something to, you know, just have a discussion and bring us all on the same page. So, I look forward to going through it.
Julian, I think this has been wonderful.
Andrew has some comments, so Wally, while we're just on-
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, behind the scenes, we've been talking about the phasing in with just the registration phase. Andy's given me some updates on the talks that have been going on. I myself think that makes a lot of sense. One of the reasons is, I think when we go through the registration phase, we're gonna learn a whole lot from that process. People are gonna learn a whole lot of stuff that we don't know. We're gonna figure out a lot of stuff that's gonna help carry the full ordinance through. I'd like to make a comment on winning lawsuits, okay? Mostly, my experience is, winning lawsuits are still pretty expensive. And you still have to pay attorneys, you'll have to do all that, you know, so we don't wanna get in that space any way, shape, or form. It will still cost the city money, even to win it. As far as, um, uh, so to shorten this up, mind your acting anyways, is, um, I think we ought to do the phase in with registration, go through that process, learn everything from that process. The inspections, I got confused by the inspections. The inspections that are already required by the state and county, those, to me, should be part of the registration, proof of inspections. And if, I'm gonna carry on one second. We keep finishing up here, uh, the problem with the county doing fire inspections, et cetera, et cetera. We really don't know that that's a fact. We only have that from phone call information of contacting somebody on the other end of the phone, said, oh, we're too busy, we can't do that. So, we are in the process of, um, requesting officially from the county to do our own buildings in the city. And until we get that back, um, we really don't know what, if they, if we have an inspection dilemma or not. So, I'd like to move forward myself as if, you know, Marion County has to supply inspections. That's, they gotta figure it out. We should not be changing course based on their woes. And the woes may not even exist as far as we know. So, bottom line is, I think it makes sense to phase this thing in, let's get intelligent, you know, gather some intelligence going through that phase, and I think it will really help the efficiency of passing an entire ordinance. My humble opinion.
Okay, I came into tonight, I had some things I wanted to bring up. I went and talked to Jan to clear up, to try to take some of the harshness out of this, and to make it a little more clear. According to Jan, the cost for this registration business tax will be around $70. You've got $40 for your fire inspection, and if you have a building inspection. So, we're looking at maybe $150 for, for the registration. Then, she was telling me about the software to administer it. Last year, the reported income off of short-term rentals in Dunellen was $1.3 million. So, I think, as you said, passing it back so it's neutral is not gonna be an onus, an onus on anyone, because I saw the projection from one of the emails where this was gonna cost us like $300,000 a year.
It's not, right?
I think, interestingly, tonight, you brought up the same point I did. If we take out all the state statutes, all the stuff that is required, we're not making up new laws. We just take out the stuff that the state does. We basically then just have to work with what we want, which will speed, which will streamline the process. The suits, you brought that up, the Indian Rock suit, and one of the things I, I read were two points. The city did choose to change the occupancy, and they won. But the most important part of that lawsuit- But the most important part of that lawsuit, when you read it, was that the person who brought the lawsuit is a person who owns 70, 80, 70 to 80 short-term rentals in Indian Rocks. That's what's coming to Dunellen. It's not going to be individual people anymore. Every house that goes up now is going to be a potential short-term rental. And when you've got companies that have 70 or 80 that are going to be owning Dunellen, that's what we're trying to put this in, in order to have a way to legislate it. I think tonight, the talk about efficiency, about setting it up, I'm wondering too, if on the form, where we have the forms and everything, when we bought, when we, if we do get software to do this, so that we can track it, most of those forms will probably be in the software, so we're not going to have to do it. The only other suggestion I want to talk with Jan to see if we could do is if we could have one date for the registration, one month for the registration of short-term rentals, they register, whether it's a business tax or a registration, it would be prorated through the year. And the reason is then, so say like we make March short-term rental registration month. We've got a list, because we've required registration of all the principal people and their phone numbers. We can then forward that with their permission to the Marion County Fire Prevention Bureau, and they can have a list of all the inspections that they have to do in that month, and then rather, since they're shorthanded, sending a guy down to do three inspections. He comes down and does 20 inspections a day, and it gets knocked out, and then we have a control over.
Right.
And you are completely right about what you said about fire extinguishers. I did fire inspections with the city, we went in, we checked your fire extinguishers, is that a date? Yep, here, yep, call somebody in. So that is true. So that's something. So only thing tonight, some of you will speak, what I would like to hear tonight is what you felt about the presentation, and what you felt about the questions that Julianne asked at the beginning, and about just your overall feeling of the meeting tonight. So I thought it was very effective, because really, we are here to serve you, and I want to, I want to hear what you have to say.
Wally, may I ask, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jan.
I'll make this very brief. I'd just like everyone to keep in mind that short-term rentals bring people to our city, most of them are not a problem. I've talked to a number of people who have neighbors who have short-term rentals, or have had short-term rental clients themselves. And I met someone, Ms. Mills, Sunday by chance, and she knew who I was, and she said, you know what, I've been doing this for eight years. She's up over by the Granada. I had one problem with, with one of my clients, and I took care of it, that's it, one in eight years. So yeah, obviously, there's a problem. There are some problems, but we still need to keep in mind the benefit of these people who come and visit through, and instead of staying in a hotel motel, they're staying at a short, short-term rental establishment. That's all I have to say.
Andy, I've been speaking with you on and off the last couple of weeks. Now we're hearing software, et cetera, et cetera. You and I spoke a few times that with the short, the small number that we're talking about, we probably don't need a lot of software, we just do it on an Excel sheet type thing. Do you, I mean, I know everything's going, kind of going back and forth pretty fluid right now, but what would your input be?
What I learned from Crystal River is they look at software, they got a quote, I think they spent somewhere around $13,000 for implementation, and it might have been $5,000 or $6,000 a year going forward, to learn that actually, in the city of Crystal River, they only had about 13 actual verified rental properties. It was something ridiculous like that. I want to say less than 20. So they spent a lot of money on something that they looked back and said, we probably really didn't need to spend that money, so I'd be very careful about that. I'm thinking if you've got less than 50 short-term rentals in the city, that can be tracked very easily through a spreadsheet. The only thing that the, that the software does in addition to acting as your database for those owners, is it constantly monitors the internet for advertising short-term rentals in your area, and that was another thing that Crystal River found when they got the quote. The quote was based, something on, they, they run like a, a test, and they say, oh, it looks like you have X number of rental properties in your area. But then when they compiled it down to just Crystal River, the city limits, it was next to nothing compared to what they thought it was going to be. So I think by going that route, you're probably, if we were to have them do that initial testing, they'd probably say, oh, a 34431, 32, 33, whatever, you know, we're just 31 and 32. But they're going to see a lot, but it's going to take some whittling that down to say, okay, well, there's 150 or 200 out there, but how many of those are actually in the city limits?
Right.
But like I said, I mean, if we had hundreds of them, I would say, yeah, it would probably be a good idea to purchase software and have a, an actual database and, and have the search if we were larger. And if it turns into what Rex is saying, we may need that eventually, but I'd say if we have less than 50, I don't see why we couldn't track it in-house through just a simple database or a sheet.
Okay.
That was my thought, to try to get it set up for one month, so that the staff has to deal with it for one month, and then we're done for the year.
And that's the way we do business tax receipts. Business tax receipts go out in July of every year. So it's that once-a-year process that you, you got to go through, and, and I agree that that would be a similar process, but, you know, maybe January or something, maybe split up, because, you know, you're six months apart dealing with all that, you know, so, you know, what, try to time it the same as the business tax receipts, because that's a whole nother process at itself.
Right.
And so maybe make it, you know, early in the year, early spring or something, so kind of space that out a little bit.
Sure. The other comment I heard was us tracking inspections, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't think we were going to get into that business. What I thought was going to happen is, is that these would be annual renewals, and they would have to produce the paperwork, they would do the labor, the homework, get their own stuff inspected, but the city has nothing to do with taking on tracking inspections, notifying anybody, not the county, not anybody. Is that kind of similar?
Well, I believe the way the ordinance is written right now, it stands to the city that's responsible.
Right, right, which is part of what Jan was saying before. Okay, so when we get, when we get down to this, then we'll get to go through those points.
But my thought was, is if they're having to register with the state, and the state requires the inspection, and then they're registering with the county, because the county also requires registration, they don't, they don't regulate in any way, but they do require registration, that that documentation would be in hand when they registered with the city.
Correct.
Right, we don't.
Correct.
We don't take on that.
And I don't know if the county requires them to show the proof of inspection, fire inspection, building inspection. I don't know what the county requires through their application process, but we can find out. But I sort of thought that's kind of stuff, we, they would already have that when they come in to apply for their.
Right, right. So we wouldn't put any more burden on them to produce the document, they already have it.
Okay.
And I know we're getting into weed, sorry, Julianne.
Good discussion.
Is that it?
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, when you register with the state, you're supposed to provide, or have at least, the way I think it's written is, you can get your registration to the state and not have your inspections, but you need to have your inspections within a certain period of time, and you're right, by the time they get that and they come to the city, we don't require a separate inspection, that's just whatever they have, they gave to the state, so we shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't be charged for it, anyway.
Okay. The state, the state doesn't actually conduct inspections or?
No, they don't conduct them, no.
Right.
But they, I think, when you register with the state, you're supposed to have proof that you are having it inspected. You see what I'm saying? But no, no, the state does not do this. They just say, as part of your registration package to us, you've got to provide us with a fire inspection, a building inspection. Well, all I was going to do in this ordinance, or all that I was planning, was we would just take whatever we have. I mean, we wouldn't require a separate, and we would, surely wouldn't administer this. This is not something we're going to do.
Okay. Is that it for up here?
All right, everybody, I want to remind everybody, we do have a meeting on the third. We have a budget meeting first.
Yes, 3:00.
Yeah, 3:00.
And also, because I got to sit back here for just a few minutes to get the agenda pushed out for next Monday. Julie, if you don't mind handling the public comments for me while I'm doing that, we just got to get the agenda finished for Monday.
No, I'm sorry.
Question, are we putting this discussion on the workshop, again, for the regular workshop next week? No?
I don't, well, we will. We will to decide what we're going to do with big ordinance or just the registration. Yes, we, we will have a short discussion.
And then give Andrew guidance.
Add that, add that to the agenda. I'll, I'll go in there for just a second.
Okay.
So, so just to clarify, counsel, you all made the decision then, at the next workshop, I won't be doing anything, so the next workshop will hold off, get your direction at that point, and then we'll decide where to go.
Okay.
Right. My vision is, Andrew, like you say, we'll make a decision amongst us, do we want to do an ordinance first, if it only includes registration or a full-blown ordinance, make that decision Monday, and then I would say, based on that, we may have a special workshop for this ordinance or registration later in July, which we'll have to schedule once we make that decision.
Okay.
Okay, now we're ready for public comments. I would ask everybody to be very courteous to everyone, address the, when you come to the podium, please give us your name, address, you'll have three minutes to comment. You can comment on anything you want to, not just what's on, we have been discussing here. We will take the folks that have signed up first, and then we will go to the folks in the audience and the Zoom folks after that. Okay, Julie, have you got a list?
Yep, first one on the list is Brandon Rice.
And then Rice.
I was going to say, is there a question to speak yet?
Thanks. Take that. All right.
Oh, I can't see you, it was on Zoom, I might have to leave for a minute because I did.
Okay, well, if they're on Zoom, we'll just skip them, all right now.
My name is David Coder, I live at 11983 Palmetto Way, and I appreciate the effort that was put into this meeting, the PowerPoint presentation. I'm sure a lot easier for me to follow what was going on, and I'm sure those people on Zoom loved it, because they gave us some sense of direction, seemed to keep things in order, just thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, the idea of having a, as a separate application, I think is a great one, and get that done first. Give you an example, I had a rental property in, up in Gainesville that used to be my mother's old house, and I've had that since 2000, and I think it was in 2002, they started charging me a, a rental fee, as a rental owner's fee, and by 2006, they told me I needed to have a inspection, and I need to do a self-inspection. Well, I did my self-inspection, rather lengthy, and submitted it, and they said they would eventually get around to having somebody from the city come out to do an inspection. Well, that never happened, and this past year, they raised the, the owner's rental fee from $122 to $222, and, and, and I said, you know, enough of this, and taxes are going up in Gainesville, and my wife says, I'm tired of you going up there, and so I sold the house. But to give you an idea, I think revenue neutral is, is a good idea for what, it doesn't cost the cities any money, right? But it shouldn't be costing us taxpayers money. And just to give you, and looking at, at $200 for rental, short-term rental, I think would be enough to cover a lot of the inspections and stuff that's going to come to the city, so I would suggest that we definitely look at doing something and do some research as to what's, what's applicable. These are businesses that are in it to make money, and if we make them pay a fee, they might just have to raise their rates, it might slow down the traffic, traffic on the river, I would be very pleased with that. We've got enough traffic on the river as it is, so if we slow the traffic down a little bit, I'm fine with that. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Wally, before we call the next person, are we committing to not responding to the public's comments today?
Yes.
They won't be back and forth discussion or response to questions. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Matt Wheeler.
Hello, I have a property at 12094 Palmetto Way. I appreciate your question, how does this feel? This feels painful. This is annoying, it's exhausting. We've been dealing with this since, I think, April last year. This seems, to be honest, ridiculous.
I speak a little loud.
This seems ridiculous. And the city's under a lot of change in staff, it has a history of not being good with money, it has a history of running business out of town. This is not a bunch of big corporate entities here, or the people online, with 70 houses. This town is a small town. We're all individual people, we like, we like living here, we like vacationing here, we like sharing this town with our friends and family, and sharing the river, and taking care of the river, just like everyone else who lives here. We provide short-term housing, this is not just a business. We are people, we love this town, we're doing more for this town than a lot of people are giving to this town. I've fixed up 2030 Pennsylvania Avenue, it's sat vacant for 10 years. I bought what was an abandoned drug house up Palmetto Way, and I'm sitting on it right now because of you guys. I got kids sitting in my car right now. I had to ask to speak with a friend of mine. We're all doing what we can to be part of this, but this is a burden on a lot of people, not just you guys financially. We don't make a ton of money. This has been a slow year, $200 a night, or whatever was quoted. Maybe you should look at occupancy. What kind of problems are our D and D's short-term rentals really creating? What data has been brought to the table? I haven't seen any data from anybody about any problems. What police records? Produce data. You have no data. This is a few people with interests on the river, and it's all politics. I would like to continue making this town more loved, more stewarded, and be more part of this community. You guys are literally putting a damper on the, the energy of this town. We're going to keep showing up, and we'll do whatever we have to do. But please, don't silence us. Please, take into consideration data at all viewpoints, as you say you do, but it doesn't feel like it, it does not come across that way, Julianne. Jan makes a lot of great.
Rest in chair, please.
I'm sorry, Wally. It does not appear, Wally, that certain people on the council, okay, allow other people on the council to speak the same amount of time, who have different viewpoints. It feels like people get silenced on this side as well, sometimes. So we'd appreciate a holistic approach. I think all of us agree, the registration, the first skeletal draft that you guys come up with last year, registration makes sense. Yes, my time, I got it, thank you. Good job. As far as coming at short-term rentals as somehow we're the enemy of the town or the river, that's not true. We provide housing to people. Okay?
Thank you, Matt. Next.
Hello, counsel, Bill White, 12115 Palmetto Way. Mr. M-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say to you that the last part of this workshop, you start saying things that ring definitely true with my way of thinking, and I support slimming it down and starting from the bottom and working up. Just like to read to you something that I pretty much already shared with you via email. But the general public hasn't had the opportunity to hear my thoughts. And I would like to read this, so it is public record. And everybody knows what I've said to you. They now know what I've said. I'm here to make comment on the STR draft that is now before you. My comments are informational. It should not be construed as pro or con. What I have to say is mainly a repetition of what I've submitted to you previously via email. The reason I am repeating it now is so the general public is also made aware. Over a year ago, a resident came to this podium at where I'm standing right here and advised the then-city council of the concerns regarding the growth of short-term rentals within the city. The resident explained that there were up to 50 SDRs and the number was growing. The city was also informed that few of the 50 STR owners were registered with the state in Marion County and thus were not paying their taxes related to SDRs. City council was additionally made aware that the city itself had no record of where the STR residents were and even who owned them. So that was the beginning of this. So with that information, the previous council responded. With the information after discussion, city council directed staff to draft an ordinance that would require that in order to operate an STR within the city, the owner would have to show proof of registry with the state and county and to pay mandated taxes. The city also wanted to know what residences were being used for this service and who the owners were. We also discussed the inclusion in the ordinance of some basic, basic elements, such as occupancy, parking, and noise. That was the concept of the previous council when it came to this ordinance. What came out of community development was a draft that reached far, far beyond what city council had envisioned. The inclusion of city participation in the enforcement of state rules and regulations was not asked for by the previous city council, or was it authorized? The requirement that STR owner had to show proof of compliance with state rules and regulations as a prerequisite to operate with the city was not asked for or authorized by the previous city council.
Can you wrap it up, Bill? You threw this up.
This is my summation. The draft, once completed by community development, was forwarded to the Planning Commission for vetting and recommendations. Upon attending Planning Commission meetings, I became fully aware of the depth of the drafted ordinance and repeatedly voiced my concerns of the draft in writing and by voice to staff and legal counsel. My concerns are well documented and are retrievable by a public records request. In summary, the STR draft that you are now considering was created outside of city council and its authorization in genesis is not fully understood and remains a question. If you need to fully be, you need to be fully made aware of this as you move forward.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Val Alsauf. Val Alsauf, 18755 Southwest 60th Street to Dunellen. I'm in full compliance with the state. I'm in full compliance with my sales staff. I'm in full compliance with the Department of State. All these things you say I have to have, I've got, and I've got proof if you need it. I'm in full contact with all my neighbors. I stay in constant contact with all my neighbors. They all know who I am. They all have my phone number. They know I have a short-term rental right next door. So far, in three years, not a single issue complaint or problem. Half the time, they don't even know there's somebody in the house. I'd like to see the city council come down to our level. I'd like to see each member do a roundtable with several members of the community and just talk, plain and simple. Instead of you say your thing, we say our thing. There's no communication. It's just you against us. I would like to encourage everybody to read the article Jan Hubert put in the newspaper. You'd be shocked to see how this whole thing came to be. I want to read just one excerpt out of it. Former community development director Georgina Sid and her major partner in the development of the ordinance was a Blue Cove resident, David Porter. Porter is not an employee of Dunellen. However, Porter was allowed by city staff to steer the writing of this ordinance in every respect. Porter was in fact taking his personal agenda to regulate short-term rentals through the city hall to write this ordinance that should never have happened. Sid gave Porter authority to use the city of Dunellen staff resources, including the lawyer, to assist in this draft. The city council was never given permission for her to do this. So far, the legal advice had costed $9,000. Now here it's $10,000. I really like, oh, I already said that. I'd like to thank Jan for her courage and willingness to inform the chief city residences of how the whole short-term rental ordinance came into being. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Kelly Semper.
Hi, Kelly Semper, 11694 East Blue Cove. When this began over a year ago, I agree, a registration, perfectly fine. You need to know who's doing business in the community like that. Other than that, I don't know what it really turned into. There's 14 pages here and not a cost on any single item. That is a big problem for me. Then hearing tonight that that cost is now going to be passed on to us, we don't even know the cost. Registration fee, $150, no big deal. We're all happy to do that, for the most part. Some people might not be. But who knows what this number is going to turn out to be? Is it $5, $10,000? That's extreme, and I feel like that's an overreach from the city. We need to figure out, as a team, if we are going to go with this whole ordinance after the fact, what each line item costs, and then bring that to the public. The public needs to know these things. The city doesn't have a great financial track record, and this making, are there any other ordinances that makes the person in the ordinance pay for the ordinance? Because that's what you're doing to us. And it feels, feels awful. Because we are all, we're, nobody's a business here, like the corporations you mentioned. We're not big corporations. I'm a single person, trying to have a home that I can come retire to. Because I can't afford another home on the river right now. But hopefully it gets paid off for the most part, so I can come enjoy that in my retirement. I love Dunellen. This is where we want to be. I just can't afford it right now. But going back to the enforcement too, we got to know the cost on how much it's going to be to enforce that, who's going to do it? Because it's passing the buck to us, and I don't think we're here for that. I have zero plans on suing anybody, but people may bring Luke Loses, right? That's an additional cost. So how are we going to work that cost into what you're passing on to us when nobody knows? It's ambiguous number. So each year, you could raise it $5, $10,000, which essentially are pushing us out of business. That's what we really need to consider. Very much happy with the registration, if we can move forward on that. This, I think, is a far way off from where we need to be. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Halla Kember.
Hi. I'm at 11983 Palmetto Way in Dunellen. And I'm just realizing how much everybody has a different interpretation of everything. I am astounded at the difference in interpretation. I just want to say I know you guys have this city's interest at heart and that it's a challenge to struggle through the, putting it into operation. I just want to ask, my question is, what is short-term rental? And the other question is, could this process include education with the people that are renting the house to give to their rentees? Like this is the, I've just seen a whole 20 people coming down our street carrying tubes and climbing over the fence to get in, climbing over the bridge to get in the water. So there's no understanding of the, the city's, the way you could do it to make it a better place. What do you think? Yeah?
Thank you.
Valerie Deench.
Hey, good evening, hey neighbor. All right. Julianne, your presentation.
The chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The presentation was way too long. If you're going to stifle the council members to only respond with two-minute responses, that was way too long. And the citizens at Dunellen were not made aware that that was what was going to be on the agenda tonight and not what we came here. So just, you wanted my opinion. I'm giving you my opinion. About comment, you will have a riot on your hands if you do not allow public comment after workshops. New ideas do flow from people. You can't determine when a new idea is going to be coming in front of you. You also might hear something, which I did often, sitting in that seat, that I hadn't heard it before, or I had heard it before, but the way that person added two more things about it, or I had learned something different. You can't stifle knowledge, even if you think you know it all already. If meetings last hours, sorry, guys. Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I'm going to talk to you. Sorry, but that's the job. The meetings might go till 1, 2:00 in the morning. That's just the job, and that's the sad part of it. If there are 99 people out here that want to say something for the three-minute time, even if it's repetitive and you keep hearing it again and again, that's the job. Sorry about your bad luck. As far as the people that come to our city that are using these as Airbnbs, they are sometimes people that are coming here to celebrate graduations, weddings, 100-year birthdays. Those people might have a barbecue that afternoon for those family members that live here in our city, that are residents. But they're coming to that house in the river that they can't afford, but they are coming. And yes, their car might be parked in the yard for a few hours, but then they go away. I understand not having 15 cars in somebody's yard for a whole week. I get that. Totally understand that. But that is something that, you know, I think we should be proving up. The positive, those people that come here, this young lady right here, she might not live here right now full-time, but she might buy a home here after being an Airbnb resident. Families are coming here, and I can tell you that the property values, which I did have an issue with, the words that lower property values and otherwise negatively impact permanent neighborhood and residence, that is a false statement. That is not a true 100% statement. Property values do not go down. I can prove it. They've been rolling six 30 years. The home, they actually keep their yards a heck of a lot better than me because they're hiring somebody to do their property management for them. So I would have anybody, you know, review that. And I'm just going to let you know real quick, and I know I'm wrapping this up. I did hear some census from y'all. I heard three of you say that you want your first ordinance to be for registration only. So I'm not sure why one person kind of leads the path to negatively get rid of that. So please remember, public comment, you want to hear it all the time, even when you don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else in the room signed up.
Okay.
I'll take one.
Yeah.
Okay, David.
Hi, David Hendricks from 11446 Hendricks Drive. First of all, I'd like to say, my dad bought there in 1954, and I've been living there pretty much my whole life. I didn't sign up to have 17 kids underwater, 16 adults, and then 10 other people show up about two hours later. So that's meant for the KP hole or our city parks. So I'm all for the city doing what you're doing. I'd like for y'all to do it in a very timely fashion so that people like myself that live right next door to a short-term rental, that they have rules. Those rules are already set by the state. So if you take some of them or you do away with some, but there's rules for people, all you have to do is follow them. So I commend y'all on what you're doing. I know it's painful, but I'm behind you 100%. Thank you.
I'll get it. Okay, there was. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Wendy Sam, and I'm 11580 Camp Drive. I thought today was very illuminating, and I enjoyed hearing all the discussions and all the processes and strategies that you're having to do to get a good document. So to me, it's sort of like you're looking at Mount Everest and you're trying to get base camp, right? So we might say, okay, base camp might be registry, okay? But while everybody's at base camp, you still have to start thinking about how are we going to get up Everest? And I think that's what you're trying to do. You're trying to come through with a plan. Because if only three people are climbing Everest, that's one thing. You've got 200 people climbing Everest all at the same time, trying to get to the summit, knocking each other down, that's a whole different problem. I think, looking at the long term of this, like Jan brought up, you have to have a plan. You have to have an idea of where you want this to go. Because right now, it might be local people having a retirement plan like that was brought up. But if we don't start having some basic self-regulation or some initial quality control among the short-term renters themselves, then it comes where we get bigger companies coming in. And they might decide, you know, we'd like to buy up 20 places. Or this new development that's coming in, when they build those houses, we'll think we'll buy those right off the bat. And the argument is, well, we're not trying to hurt anybody. We're just trying to have places for people to stay. Well, that's what long-term rentals are. If you're not going to be here, and you're not going to be local, and you're sitting there watching what's going on with the people renting your place, then that's called give a yearly rental to that person then. So I'm really not buying that we're not in this to make money, because they are. It's a business, okay? That's why it's called short-term rental business. If you're in a neighborhood, and on my, on my street alone, there's seven short-term rentals between Blue Cove or Camp Drive all the way down to Burkett. So there's seven. It's not an abstract idea for me. I'm not on land, acreage, I don't have a buffer. I've got them right behind me, doing birthday parties till midnight, having 10 college boys renting it all at one time for two weeks and parking cars. It's not an abstract problem. It's a real one. And I don't expect the county to solve every pond right now. So that's why I think, you know, you're right, maybe we ought to start with the registration process. I think, though, to expect the short-term rental owners to self-police, I think that's the reason why you see the things with the fire extinguishers, where another company has to come in. I know it's a pain in the butt, but when I set up a clinic, there are checklists, there are things that I have to regulatory do to run a business. And if they're wanting to run a home like a business, all I'm expecting or asking the council to do is to have a basic framework of which you're starting to work from. And I think you're trying to do that.
Thank you.
It doesn't have to be perfect, but inertia is a killer. So try not to let the problem get so big that you can't start. That's all.
Thank you so much.
And again, I'm not trying to have us versus them. I've lived here 13 years. There may be a two-tier system. It may be people that are taxpayers and landowners and voters. We might have 10 cars in our yard for an afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Mendonso. I live at 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. I'm also the president-elect of the Blue Cove Association, which is not an HOA, by the way. It's a social club. Our competence expired over 10 years. Our competence expired over ten years ago, but we do have a deed of property on one fifty-five Camp Drive, that we, as a board of directors of seven members, we administer it. Because I'm the president of the association, I get calls all the time from residents complaining about Airbnb problems. And I can't do anything about it, because I'm not an enforcer. By the way, Chief, congratulations on your new appointment, and I hope, wish you the best luck with your enforcement. I got a text message this Saturday from one of my neighbors who built their dream home on East Blue Cove Drive, saying, you can stand on my back porch, this was eight, eight PM, you can stand on my back porch and smell the alcohol coming from the Airbnb next door. He has a five-year-old and a seven-year-old with special needs. Then, at nine-thirty, he texted again, I don't know if it's legal marijuana, but our backyard smells like a Cheech and Chong concert. And then at ten PM, at ten-fifteen PM, he said, nine-one-one call. So it's just one example of what's happening. And then yesterday, I was talking to another neighbor, she lives on Wood Duck, and she said that there was a teenager, maybe older teenager, she said, on his underwear on her backyard from one of the parties, and she also had children in her house. And I also heard Airbnb owners step up to this microphone tonight, and say that they don't have a business, but that you're trying to run them out of business. So which one is it? So I applaud your effort, I think it's very necessary, because for them, it's outside of mind. They're renting to wonderful people that are not here to see what they're doing. And I'm getting calls, I'm not a police officer. I have attempted to go to places and talk to people, and I get physically threatened. So I was stood by the court, with his chief, saying, don't ever approach anybody, call nine-one-one. And most people don't go, because they're afraid of repercussion, they're afraid of retaliation. Because after all, even though they're Airbnb owners, they're our neighbors, so it's a very difficult position to be in, and to try to manage this, but we do need to have the regulations in place. And we do need enforcement, most important. It was most important, without the enforcement, the regulation really, you know, have no validity. So Chief, I can do a little help. Okay, so thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Jake's face in fifteen ninety West J. Williams Lane. I told the last council, when they were passing another ordinance that could potentially affect somebody's business, you want to be extremely careful when you pass something or legislate to limit somebody's freedoms. The reason why is because you don't know the repercussions. I, so I gave that warning, saw that ordinance pass, and then a few months later, watched the previous mayor be absolutely stunned by the fact that ordinance that he passed disables him from allowing a big kayak racing event to come in and use that place for a stop. So you have to be extremely careful when you're making a big ordinance to limit people's freedoms of any kind. Now, there's a lot of concerns I've been hearing about people coming up and saying, you know, this is happening with these rentals, this isn't happening with these rentals. Well, another thing, the other side of the story is, is if somebody did, decided to build their own there, and then found out that there are short-term renters nearby, why didn't they realize that before? They didn't vet the land properly, that's partially their fault, too. There's always multiple sides to every issue. And again, issue the warning, you have to be extremely careful when you legislate against citizens.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Art Jones here in the city of Dunellen. Good to see everybody tonight. I'm going to say something totally different, not on the short-term rental.
I knew you would.
Okay. So, you know, I've been working a long time on trying to get it going to clean up the river, and we finally got a grant. The grant came through, it's signed, sealed, delivered, so a hurricane is not going to wash it away this time. So I would like to ask Rex if he would be the liaison to our group, so he can keep the council totally informed as we go forward.
Okay.
And what we'll do is, I'm getting everything together now, we've got a lot of things to get together, but we want to do a full presentation for the council, when you're ready, maybe either in August or September. Okay? Good, all right, thank you.
Art, thank you so much, and if you would just give it to Mandy and the staff, and we'll get you worked into schedule somewhere. Thank you, Art. Okay. Anyone else?
Well, does everyone have anything to say? I have four words.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
All right, am I on?
Any here?
All right, all right, voice, one-one-seven-six-zero Cherokee Circle. And I do appreciate all the time and effort that's being put into this, so that we could get an ordinance that we can all agree to. One of the things that I would like to recommend is to have some type of STR representation at the planning committee. It may not necessarily have to be questioned at the end, but just somebody there, because again, there's a lot of things that as an owner, that we are, be able to make you aware of certain things, of what knowledge we have of our clients. If we go through Airbnb or VRBO, we don't know it's rented until after it's rented. So just to have a STR representation at the planning committee may work wonders. I do want to reiterate Jan's point of STR customers definitely financing, financially benefiting the city of Dunellen, because they have rented a house that has a kitchen, that they will go buy groceries, they spend their money on gas, they rent kayaks, they enjoy the river, just like everybody else, but everybody else may have their own kayaks, where these people that come in there, either the STR owner has bought kayaks, most likely from Dunellen. So the financial ability of our customers, do not downplay that, just because we don't, in the city of Dunellen, make money on taxes, we make money in other ways. I wanted to do one thing real quick, they're talking about how the meeting went. I really believe there was very coercive leading questions. When every question basically is answered with a yes, that is the definition of a coercive leading question. When you provide a specific answer, usually yes, what really, what are you getting out of it? You're just boarding your own agenda on that. Voices of reason need to be given at these committee meetings. One more thing I really want to talk about, and spending another ten thousand, more or less, to start over and create another ordinance, if passed into law, that may be polished in the view of the city of Dunellen, but not enforced evenly with other laws, codes, ordinances, and inspections, win or lose, could lead to never-ending litigation. Are these litigation costs going to be passed on to the STR owners? You know, at one point, this could be limitless. And I, I think no one is arguing the fact that regulation is a good idea, we are businesses, we should be registered with the city, I have no issue with that. Inspections, if done, need to be able to be done. If we can't get our registration done, because we're being held up because we can't get an inspection, that, again, could lead to other issues. If STR owners are held to a different level than other businesses within the county, within the city, you know, again, that could lead to litigation issues, you know, because we are being singled out.
Can you wrap it up, please, your three minutes is up.
All right. And again, I do appreciate everything that's being done, but it, it was very obvious with these coercive leading questions, that this was not, there was an agenda that needed to be done by the council. Thank you, Raymond Rice is out.
Thank you. Next.
Meg Phillips?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Meg Phillips, one-two-zero-five-five Palmetto Way, Dunellen, Florida, three-four-four-three-two. So, given that we're having this wonderful discussion, this high-level discussion on the best way to move forward with the ordinance, I think it's worth saying that there's one very important question that the council has not discussed, and that is, is this ordinance worth the cost to the city? So first off, I don't know that anyone has considered what tangible damage has been done to the city or its residents by short-term rentals, or the presence of short-term rentals in the community. I don't, I don't think anyone has taken the initiative to list out those negative impacts and review them alongside the ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money that has been spent thus far, and also the tens of thousands that will be spent just this year if it's decided to move forward, especially given the recent suggestions by Julie Ann to effectively start over and essentially throw out all of the work that the planning committee has done to date. I think it's important to consider whether moving forward with this ordinance is even in the best interest of the city of Dunellen in the first place. The complaints that I have heard through people standing up in this public forum are either things that can be addressed by the police, or they're things that can't and shouldn't be addressed at all. If someone wants to have a birthday party in their backyard, or invite their friends to swim in the river, that's not something that needs to be, or should be, regulated. So you can't own the water, and if you don't like people, then you should move to a more rural area without a public waterway in your backyard. And lastly, if it's the intent to pass along tens of thousands of dollars to the short-term rental owners, what happens if we close our rentals? And what happens if there's no one else to pay your bills? Because I'm also a taxpaying citizen, but it doesn't seem that my interests are really being considered, or even reasonably represented in this discussion. And I personally cannot speak for all of the STR group, although we are a large group and we do collaborate quite a bit more than the city council does, but I personally would rather spend my money to sue the city if that's an option, or if not, then I'll shut my short-term rental down, or possibly even just continue providing my rental contacts use of my house for free. So, you know, you can't regulate that if I don't charge it. Someone mentioned that this process will take a very long time to officially be enforceable, which is definitely true. I think the city should consider how much money will be spent by the city before you even have an option to collect it from short-term rental owners. So if we all sell our properties and find homes that we can have as our vacation rentals elsewhere, then the people that are going to be left paying these bills that you're spending are the taxpayers. They're going to be paying, and after the tax implications of this discussion tonight and every other discussion, both past and present on this topic. And then, just my final, last thing, just so that everyone is educated on this particular topic, because I've heard a few people say otherwise, even if a short-term rental is not properly registered with the state of Florida or Tallahassee, if they are using one of the two most common platforms, which is Airbnb or VRBO, then they are paying taxes, and their taxes are being taken out and admitted appropriately. So if you're concerned, or thinking that there's going to be more taxes available once everyone's registered, I just want to, like, put that all out there, taxes are already paid, as long as they're using one of those two platforms. So that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Amber Serena, one-one-four-two-six Southwest Hendricks Drive. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, well, after the back and forth and all the confusion of which ordinance we're even talking about, I'm totally confused. I have no idea what we're talking about, where we're going, nobody can make heads or tails of, not even our, not even our city attorney, I hear him chuckling, he's like, well, when you guys tell me what to do, I mean, poor guy. I don't appreciate Jan, who is a senior council member, a veteran, at, living in Dunellen, and knowing what this town can and cannot handle, it's muted, and other people are given time to talk. It's, I, that makes me feel very uncomfortable. If my neighbors have an issue, I ask that they text me respectfully. I'm fine with that. I don't want to, I don't want to be bullied, I don't want to bully text, I don't want you to write in my desk. So give me a call, hey, or people showed up, I'm uncomfortable with that. I got it, I'm on the phone, I'm there. I'm happy to, to limit anything that's going on that's crazy in my neighborhood. This is my home, too. I purchased this home when it was for sale for two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars in twenty-ten. It was so dilapidated, full of black mobile termites, I had to take it down, I had even replaced the studs, okay? David Hendricks could have purchased it next door, his dad used to own it, the Dons could have purchased it, turned it into a family home, but I had to spend my entire life savings at that time, a single mom, to remodel that house, I couldn't afford to live there anymore. But I know that I wanted it for retirement, for myself and for my children, future children. I'm so embarrassed that you all are spending this kind of taxpayer dollars and time on this ordinance, which makes no sense, when we still have dilapidated buildings. Families living in these commercial buildings, two bedrooms, two baths, fifteen people. I mean, nothing is being done, the police forces, you know, and there are so many topics that have not even been touched on, and this is how you're going to spend your tenure, bankrupting this comp, this city? In a lawsuit for something that has no merit? Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, that's all I got.
Thank you. Next.
I'm not sure who this is, it's just a phone number.
Okay.
Hi there, this is Katie Guy, one-two-two-zero-five-Palmetto-Way. A lot of great comments here, so I won't repeat everything, but one, just to identify, that it feels like there's a pretty uneven application of the process and the protocol. And just to highlight a couple, you've got to say you want public comment, but then not receiving it till the end of meetings, after you have discussed things amongst yourselves, doesn't leave adequate time for relevant input to really influence the content of the ordinance. You say you want things to be efficient, but then you're going back to the very beginning, which is basically ignoring all of the input that was given for over a year to the planning commission. The going back to the very beginning is very dismissive of the process that the city has gone, has undertook in order to have a diligent and thorough review. So that's just confusing. I'm confused as to what the urgency is around this, to where this needs to be put into place so quickly, when there's obviously a lot of thought and assessment that needs to go on. I'm encouraged about the comments about starting with the registration, and fully assessing and understanding the cost and the benefit, and what it's going to take to fully administer this ordinance, including the cost of what happens when rentals shut down, what happens with the cost of legal fees, and the long-term cost of what happens if tourism slows down to the city. Ultimately, that's the kind of fiduciary responsibility that the city council has, is to understand fully the cost and the benefit of the decisions that you're making when you're undertaking an ordinance of this nature. I would like to recommend that you take a small walk in the shoes of a vacation rental owner, because if you, if you called today and you called around, you would see that there is not a viable pathway for inspections. there is not a viable pathway for inspections. It's very confusing and it is not feasible that we would just show up to register and be able to demonstrate compliance with, with quote, "the law." If you call Marion County, they don't know what to do and Marion County Fire Inspection says, yeah, the city of Dunellen, we're just waiting for them to develop the ordinance. This is not something that is commonplace today. And so just pick up the phone and make some calls and act like you're a vacation rental owner and see what that process is like to schedule building code inspections of, and understanding what they're inspecting, fire code inspections, separate certifications of fire extinguishers. It's really an endless and very confusing problem. You know, I'd like to say, there's a recognition, too, of the, there's three lawsuits that were underway in one of the cities, and the city finally just sat down with the relevant parties and made some progress. So I'd like to offer and happy to sit down with anyone to really thoughtfully come up with a rational and standard and simple way for having vacation rental owners comply with something that can make a better guest experience and make a better experience for permanent residents. This is the old adage of, if you want to go fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go together. So I really believe that if we start simple and start small and be very thoughtful and very careful about this, we can find a good compromised position for all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone else?
I don't have anyone else. I'm sorry, I'm running out of time.
Okay. Anyone out in the audience like to speak that hasn't spoken? Okay. I'd like to remind everybody, we have a meeting next week on Monday, on the third. It will start with a budget meeting at three. Okay, three o'clock, and then followed by a workshop, city council meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Give a second.
Bye.